You ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay. This, this meeting is, this meeting is now, this meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Franklin, present.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
Trustee McMullin.
Present.
Mayor Rudes.
Here.
Also noting for the record, also present at this meeting is Village Manager, Ernestine Beckham-Fulcombe. Attorney Joe Miller. Village Treasurer is Jim Ellis, and?
Yes.
Village Treasurer Jim Ellis. Village Clerk Dee Jones. Oh, and cable communications, all of that, Neva Jenkins.
Okay. Um, roll call, Madam, oh, this is roll call, alright. Cause I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read a brief statement, and then we're gonna do a pledge of allegiance, and then we go to the meeting. Pursuant to the Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-07 COVID-19 Executive Order Number Five, which suspends the requirements of the Illinois Open Meetings Act requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body during the duration of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation. The members of the village board will not be physically present for the designated board meeting, but will be, will instead be participating in the meeting through audio access using a virtual meeting platform. Public comments may be submitted in advance of the meetings to Village Clerk Dee Jones at deejones@university-park-il.com or by text message to 708-473-6201. All comments must be received by 5:00 PM the day before the meeting. In order to give proper consideration to all items on this agenda, the mayor will limit participants in debate and will close off proactive, repetitive, irreverent, or abusive remarks. Can we do the pledge of allegiance, Madam Clerk?
Do you see the flag?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
I'll do you.
And I am the mayor. And. So which would be then, one nation. Under God. And indivisible. For liberty, liberty, and justice for all.
For all. Uh, approval of the minutes, is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Trustee Bowden, second by Trustee Brooks. Questions? Roll call?
Yes. Trustee Williams.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What, what is this, where we at?
You're approving the minutes.
Oh, oh, yes. The both eye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both eye.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both eye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both eye.
Trustee Bowden.
Both eye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both eye.
And Mayor Rudes.
Both eye. That's it, that's it, Madam Clerk?
That's it, but the minutes approved.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are there any general public comments?
Yes, yes, there is. I received four general public comments by email, and I will read them in the order received. The first one was received at 3:12 PM on Monday, May 25th. From, somebody needs to shut their camp, their volume.
Hit mute.
It's from Victoria Robinson. It says, she's resident number two. Hi, Mayor and trustees. I just want to say thank you for helping with food drives and helping the residents during this terrible COVID-19. I saw you and trustees and our clerk passing out food to hungry families. God sees it too, and I just wanted to say thanks. My family sees how hard you are trying and wanted you to know we support you, and so do many of my neighbors. God bless you, our clerk and trustee. Nice comment. The second one is from, was received Monday, May 25th at 3:50 PM, and the subject is looking up. It's from Tammy Johnson. Dear Mayor Rudes, I want to thank you and the trustees for working so hard to turn our village around. I can see you all are trying your best after years of no progress. Keep bringing businesses like Amazon and resurfacing our streets like University Parkway. I appreciate you and the trustees and hope you know a lot of people who aren't making negative comments on neighbors are really wanting you and the board to be successful. You all have a lot of support, thank you. The third one was received from Gina Williams, received Monday, March 25th at 4:08 PM. It says, my comments are as follows. Why does it take so long to receive a for your request? And why are some for your requests ignored altogether? There is no phone call or explanation given. Number two, why are we paying the village manager to be our tip administrator and paying Catherine Orr as well? Number three, why have our attorney fees skyrocketed? Number four, how can we afford to publish a newsletter? And who writes it and what does it cost? Printing, purchasing, and mailing. Respectfully, Gina Williams. Number four. This person asked to remain anonymous. It was received at 4:49 PM on May 25th, and it says, as a resident of the village and partial critic of the mayor and the board, I must say the response to the COVID-19 pandemic was pretty dang good. In these times, caring for your people is the most important thing, and they definitely showed that they care. And she did ask to remain anonymous. Those are the four comments, persons and comments that I received. Oh, I see Curtis is here with the interior group.
Mr. Mayor, is there?
I think the mayor is on mute.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry. So, Madam Clerk, do I do all the readings under consent agenda form?
I think what we first need, and Attorney Miller can correct me, we would first need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Is that correct?
And then. So, let's do it this way, first, let's, let's ask, is there any item that, that one of the board, members of the board would like taken off of the consent agenda?
Yes, yeah, um, only, I have, I have only two. Uh, if item F2C and F2E for Trustee Brooks.
F2C. And, yeah.
And 2E, D.
D, D is in A.
D is in A.
Yeah, C Charles and D David.
Perfect.
Police. Police terminology.
So now, we're to make a motion to approve the consent agenda siding with the removal of items 2C and 2D.
Remove, excuse me, may I, may I be recognized, Mayor?
Yes, yes, Trustee McMullin.
And I have, uh, along with the ones that Brooks mentioned, how about F2A? F2A, the first, second, and third reading.
F2A, you wanna, you wanna pull it?
I wanted, I wanted to take off, I wanted to take, taken off.
Off the consent agenda.
Question.
Okay. So we won't have a consent agenda today, doesn't look like everything is gone.
Well, we know, actually, we got F2B, F2E, and F2F.
Okay.
The, the audit, the railroad, and then the scholarships.
Okay, so someone make a motion, please.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, trustee.
This is Trustee Bowden. Okay, on F2A, um, isn't that what we talked about at, on the town meeting?
Yes.
Two weeks ago, and we can, we were all in agreement on that?
Yes. It's first, second, and third reading.
That's how you pass an ordinance.
That's how we pass the ordinance.
So.
I, I got a question.
Cause that was, that was the point of discussing it last week, I thought.
But, let me just say, you know, any board member asks for something to be removed for the consent agenda, so what I would just say is vote on those items, and then it may be a very brief discussion.
Oh, okay.
But I would say, you know, a board member has the right to ask for something to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion, further discussion with the board, and even if, you know, so.
Alright.
Okay, so let's make a motion for those items to be removed, and then we'll move forward, or, or remove from the consent agenda.
I don't think you have to have a motion.
You don't have to have a motion, every, the minutes reflect their remove, we just need a motion to approve the consent agenda with those other three items, and then we'll go by each, each of the ones removed individually.
Okay, go.
May I be recognized?
Trustee, Trustee Williams, may I be recognized?
Did, did, go ahead, Trustee Williams.
I'd like to know, on F2A, isn't this the building that's in the town center? Is this, is this also, like Shirley said, we discussed this already in the Zoom meeting? And I, I find out today that this is just gonna be a store, just like any other store. This is not gonna be like a warehouse or anything, is that correct?
So let's, let's do this.
He said this.
Let's vote, let's, let's vote on the items that remain in the consent agenda, and then you guys individually each discuss the ones that have been removed, cause we're asking questions about, let's, we'll get to that, but let's first approve the consent, the items that remain in consent agenda, and then we can go to each of those individually.
Okay.
Okay.
May I be recognized for a motion?
Go ahead, trustee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move forward that we vote on items that are left on the consent agenda. Just for the record, for Madam Clerk, the items that are left is gonna be F2B, the resolution of the audit. F2E is gonna be the resolution for, the Arturo Group for the repair of the railroad. Thank you, Liz. And also F2F, which would be the award of the 2020 scholarship recipients.
I understand, Trustee Brooks. I'm ready.
And F2B. I just, I just wanted to make it so no one say that we're not transparent.
Moved by Trustee Brooks, they are second?
Second.
Second.
Who made that second?
Jane.
Trustee, uh, Bill Jenkins. Questions? Roll call?
Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams.
She's on mute, she's, she gotta stay muted. She doesn't.
Unmute yourself.
Sorry, both eye. My fault, sorry about that.
Brooks.
Both eye.
Trustee Jenkins-Bell.
Both eye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both eye.
Trustee Bowden.
Both eye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both eye.
Mayor Rudes.
Both eye.
Okay, just for the record, the resolution numbers are for F2B, it's R2020-07. F2E is resolution 2020, or 2020-10. Okay.
Okay, now, we need a motion for those items?
You just approved those three, now we just need to do the, each F2A, F2C, and F2D individually.
Item F2A, first, second, and third reading, and ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a long-term lease agreement for the property commonly referred to as Unit 100, Town Center Drive, University Park, Illinois 60484-2800. Is there, is there a motion?
So move. Move by Brooks, second?
Give me one second.
Okay.
Williams, second.
Second by Williams.
Oh, no, I was saying, give me a second.
Yes, I am.
Additional papers. Okay, F2A.
Okay, got motion by Brooks, second by Trustee Williams, questions?
The question I had about this, on Trustee Williams, was, is this supposed to be a store, just like a regular store that people come in and purchase and buy water and stuff like that? But this is not a warehouse where you're stocking stuff? Is that correct?
May I answer that, Mayor?
Yes, ma, ma, uh, Madam, please.
It, it is a store, but like a grocery store, they will have water in the back for individuals to purchase, but it's just a retail facility, it's not an industrial whatever, all the other. This is someone that needs a license to operate, so it's not that at all.
Okay, so.
Well, they need a license, a business license, yeah.
Excuse me, uh, Mayor, can I be recognized?
Uh, if Trustee Williams, you finished?
Yes, go ahead.
Trustee McMullin.
Uh, did we do a, a, a full investigation on this company? Is it legit? Is it, did we have to do anything in reference to it?
Could I answer that?
Go ahead, Madam.
Okay, wha, what I did, I, I did the follow-up, the traditional, but we didn't have that company that does the employee, employment. We didn't have them to do it, so what I asked them to do, in addition to the background, was provide you all with more information, so what I did is they did a comprehensive summary, like a pre-qualification, and I sent that, I do believe, to all the trustees. So this is a traditional, um, operational store, it's not a distribution facility, as is assumed. They call it distribution because they sell one product.
Right.
One product.
One other. Question? Questions, please?
One, one second, Trustee Williams. Go ahead, Curtis, Trustee McMullin.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, did we lock down the, um, the, the sad things that this company was gonna do to the outside and to the inside?
Yeah, yes. Ye, yes, we did, it was, it was all wrapped up in the contract, and the council, the city council for the village did the contract, not their council. So we made sure that we had everything in there that we needed, yes, sir.
Okay, so.
May I be recognized?
Trustee Bowden and Trustee Jenkins. Trustee, Trustee Shirley?
Yes, now, I also questioned the village manager about this company, and it, you know, did she do the financials? And do they have enough money to do all the work that they said they were going to do? Cause we didn't want to get stuck like with that, you know, that trash we had over there and on the other street. Uh, so to make sure they had enough money to do what they had and told us they were gonna do two weeks ago, and that they were financially stable to do all this, that was my concern as well. And from what I gathered, they, there, there will not be all those big trucks and things coming through. I got pictures of like a, just a regular van bringing in the water. It won't be all those big trucks, and I, and I, from last week, when we, two weeks ago, when we were discussing this, we all seemed to be in agreeance with it, so I, my question is, what has changed that I, did I miss something from our last meeting, cause we're all gung ho about them coming and doing, you know, fixing up the building, and it would be set up like a storefront, they've gonna have receptions up front and hiring ten people, so what happened?
No, Shirley, I want to ask. Shirley, may I be recognized?
Trustee McMullin.
Okay, I just wanted to know, did we do a proper vetting of this company? And did we lock down the things that they said they were gonna do, cause it was quite vast? Okay, that's, I wanted to know.
Okay. Yeah, I went up there and, and then asked her about all that as well, thank you.
We did, and, um, these folk are very members of the U.S. Minority Contractors Association, and, um, the U.S. Minority Contractors Association is like Black Contractors United. So, um, one of the, the persons involved in this partnership is an, um, an officer, or whatever you wanna call him, but bottom line is, they've agreed as per contract in this organization to do the work accordingly, and they, I didn't ask them for that agreement, but they're having some kind of agreement with them where they're actually purchasing the majority of the supplies, and the contractors are actually doing the work, which is where the bulk of the money is coming from.
Okay.
And see, may I be recognized again?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Oh, sorry, Charles, I'm sorry, Trustee.
Yes, ma'am, trustee, are you finished, manager?
Yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Bowden, I mean, uh, Jenkins.
Jenkins.
Uh, I wanted to thank Trustee Bowden for asking about the financial statements, and also I wanted to know if they had done a credit report and they had did proper vetting, and I'm asking this basically for the clarification for the residents and the taxpayers, so they all know that this company is a legitimate company, because when you get on the website and you look them up, there's very little information. So we just need a lot of clarification and make sure that they are legitimate and everything will be put in its proper place.
I understood.
As a landlord, you know, when you think about landlords, you know, if you're renting, these are the proper things that you do before you accept a tenant in your, in your, in your home or your place of residence. So these are questions that I just wanted to clarify on.
Thank you, Trustee Bowden.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
And, and. Trustee, Trustee Bowden, and then, and then Trustee Brooks, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would, like I want, I just said, I just wanna make sure that they're financially stable to do all this, because that, that parking lot in, in the back back there, and they got to fix all that, and the siding of the building itself, you know, Mayor, where that big hole is back there?
Yes, indeed.
And he, they say he was gonna let the glass window stay as is, so I just wanted to make sure he didn't get in there and get started and see how much it may cost to do that drive, the parking lot, and there we are with big holes, bigger holes, and we're stuck. I want, I want to make sure to follow he, he's able to follow through all the way, and we've done all that, I'm assuming.
Yes, trustee Brooks?
Yes, Mayor, uh, thank you. I, I just wanna follow up with trustee, what, basically, all the trustees probably are on the same page.
Thank you.
I, I, I think this thing has come where it has become a question, and it was a question immediately after our, uh, committee of the whole. Now, what I'm finding is that some, some, a lot of the questions that are being posed to these, to us trustees, is that, do we know what we're getting? And the question that I'm gonna start asking is, a lot, and I'm gonna be honest, some people really don't watch the board meeting, and these are questions that were asked. Now, my position tonight, and the reason why I'm gonna take this vote, is because it has been maybe 2004. Now, I've been with my wife long enough that she has yet to set foot in that store. So we had two boards that sat up there. Two boards that sat up there, and I don't recall anybody bringing anything in that front, in that storefront. So now that we finally have something, I just would like to say, Mayor, that I am going to cast my vote for the sake of the people, we finally have that storefront, somebody that's finally gonna come in.
It shows.
Clean the asbestos out of there, clean the mold out of there, and at least bring some type of light to that building. Not only that, if they look back, the trustees have seen, and we said it at the committee of the whole, take a look at page seven of the contract the attorney made. Now, who's gonna invest a $3 million policy into this place? So I don't mean to sound like I'm preaching, but I just would like everyone to know that there is concern, but we did discuss this, and maybe we need to reiterate why there are people for it. I did look, I did see also Bo Jackson, uh, they contribute to his fund, I also seen some St. Jude.
St. Jude.
A lot of things with that, with the company, and, 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 yes, I did my homework before I cast the vote. Now, if there's an issue with this company, we'll deal with it when it comes about. But as of right now, we have finally, after two boards, two boards, we finally bringing something into this building, now, I'm talking almost over 16 years that that store was abandoned. Mayor, I yield my time.
Thank you. Trustee Franklin? Trustee Franklin?
Thank you. So I wanna say, uh, I appreciate everybody's, but, uh, I, I definitely thoroughly took a look at the contract. Um, if you haven't really evaluated the contract, there are some very specific timeframes. A lot of the work is in, in 20-day increments, it's very clear, very specific, and precise. One, one issue, or maybe, um, an issue with the verbiage that I see is in section five, when it says, the facility will be only used for the purpose of a distribution center, seems kinda, um, unclear to me just looking at the verbiage, cause I wanna make sure, and it's already been answered, but I wanna make sure that the verbiage is correct to, to make sure that, that there will be a storefront, um, component to the facility, so the residents can take advantage of the alkaline water. Um, also, as I give my input, I wanna say that I, I definitely understand from the aspect of a landlord, the proper vetting that should be in place, and also take a look at the risk and liability factor, but it was already brought up about $3 million insurance policy. And also, we have to take into consideration that there's not a whole lot that a tenant can do to leave that facility in worse condition than it's already in. So there's a liability piece that you think about when you rent out your home.
Yeah.
About a liability of a facility that's in, in not very good condition, so.
For years.
For years. So I, I, I also wanna say that, uh, uh, exciting that it's a black-owned organization, and I think that we should, we should, uh, we should do proper vetting, but we also should consider the factors that are, that are, that are, um, on the table, the condition of the building and different things. I think we've drawn up a pretty good contract that lays out, uh, the expectations to a T. Um, and I also would say that I believe it's important that we actually test the water, because, uh, we, we've, we're in the midst of a water crisis, and we don't want, uh, someone to come in and claim that the water is a certain type of water, and it's not. And I think that's just something that I've learned, buying water off the shelf, and these big major companies sell water, and it's, a lot of time, it's not exactly what it says on the, uh, on a paper.
The faucet.
Absolutely. So those are my comments, I, I definitely support the idea. Uh, my, 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 my thought process hasn't changed since the last meeting, I support black business, I support the idea, I'm excited about a black-owned alkaline company water coming to the community. Uh, just wanna make sure that everything is in place, and I also did have the concern, um, that wanna make sure that they had a thorough walkthrough and knew what they were getting themselves in financially, they seem pretty confident, uh, and, and, and I'm willing to support, and those are my comments.
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Thank you. Go ahead, trustee uh, Williams.
Yes, um, this is what I'm concerned about. And I did find out that this is not going to be a business like a warehouse that belongs to the industrial park. This is a warehouse, it's not a warehouse. It's a, it's a building that anybody off these streets, any resident can walk up there and buy water, you know? So that's what made me feel like this is good. This is good for us. And they do not belong in the industrial park.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Go ahead, manager.
Um, I just want to say, uh, trustee Franklin, I felt the same thing. And when it comes to water, I've been buying alkaline water for, forever. And um, and I wanted to know the differential. So the first thing when it, we were first introduced is, give me some samples of your project because inevitably, and I have gotten them. Um, I have given some trustees and the others, I made mention to you all that I have them, so I still have them. Uh, you know, in the back of my car, it's a gallon that I got six gallons of the water. And I think I have three, two or three left. And I don't think, uh, I don't know if trustees, Brooke, Brooks McMullin, or um, or Franklin has gotten them, but I have given the water. It is alkaline water. If you ever go to sunrise or buy them, and I know it's wonderful alkaline with a pH of nine point oh. You got it. That's it. Wait, I stopped. I stopped.
I used mine up already.
Okay, well.
Me too.
I never received any.
Okay, well then you're one of the ones still in the back of my car then. So I'll make sure you give.
Me too. Yeah.
Yeah, you didn't. It's somebody else. Did you get it?
Okay.
Okay, well, this is.
Okay. I just wanted to know. That's, thank you. Thank you for all the.
Thank everybody for input.
Answer a couple of questions, here.
Yes, yes, Joe. Mr. Miller.
So first thing, uh, trustee two to the um, trustee Brooks, I'm sorry, and trustee Franklin, in regards to what you're referring to, but the other board member, exhibit A actually gives up the timeline in regard to repair. The other thing, trustee Franklin, you had a question in regards to the term distribution center. Um, it's kind of a loosely coined term of art and it is not uncommon for a distribution center to also have a um, ability so that the public can also buy the product, product as well. So the fact that it's a distribution center and the public could go in, that's fine as well. A lot of distribution centers that we find, you know, people think, you think distribution center and you're thinking a big warehouse. For the most part, for most businesses, those distributors actually are very small. And they do allow the public to come in as well, but it's where they distribute the, they're essentially for the state of Illinois. But for the other board members, I would, you know, if you look at exhibit A, it tells the timeframes in regards to where the people can buy the, um, when it, when they're supposed to have each repair done. So it's day, exhibit A has it in like sixty days, they have three specific projects that they have to have done on the property.
Okay. So I would encourage all the board members, we just hold them to the fire, hold them to the contract, let's move forward.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay, so that's the question. Roll call, madam clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins Bell?
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin?
Both aye.
Trustee Bowden?
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin?
Both aye.
Mayor Ruthless?
Both aye.
Mister Mayor, that is ordinance O twenty twenty dash zero six.
Thank you. Thank you, madam clerk. Thank you, board. Um, item, what was the next one? It is item F two C. Is there a motion?
Um, a motion.
Motion by trustee Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Brooks. Questions?
Uh, mayor, uh, well, actually mayor and board trustees, I did um, look at the declaration. Actually, let me read it off. So um, uh, the resolution approving and authorizing a declaration of emergency COVID nineteen. If the trustees can turn to page three. Uh, I know we're a managerial government. And so when I'm looking at the language, if we go to section three, emergency regulations and order, we go down to A for emergency purchasing. Uh, it has here, the mayor and the village administrator are hereby authorized to execute such contracts in accordance uh, applied by law. And it's in reference to the uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, also, I had a question. If you turn to page four, emergency staffing, it doesn't even mention the village manager. Um, it says according, the mayor is authorized and directed to implement such emergency staffing protocol and procedures as to be necessary for the preservation of public health and safety and for the preservation of the health and of village employees specifically. And without limitation foregoing, the mayor is authorized to implement alternative staffing protocols and procedures and shifts for the village, fire, police and public works. And then down in section four, uh, again, we have here left out, the village manager's not even in here. Uh, section four, other actions authorized, the mayor is authorized to issue additional emergency regu- regulations and orders and furtherance of the declaration notice of additional regulations and orders to be provided by the clerk. Uh, so I, actually two points I want to make. One, I knew that we did have a declaration. But uh, when I talked to the village manager, maybe about, I take to madam village manager, maybe about five, we actually, when it first occurred, she did let me know that there were purchases that were made. Um, and all of the purchases that she had listed was more of emergency, uh, like the, the mask. Um, she had bought gloves. Um, everything she bought was under the five thousand dollars. And I had made it clear, in my opinion, that as long as she uh, is doing it. And also, if I'm not mistaken, uh, uh, Mr. Miller, you can uh, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. But if we already have contracts and so forth, the village manager can continue to move the village uh, in such a manner. So I'm just curious of how did we, or, or, I know who typed this up, but why would he type it up to a strong mayor type of government for, for this situation?
Can I?
So, let me, let me. Let me address one thing. So under I E M A, for section four in particular, um, the authorization is for the, either the mayor or the village president. It doesn't really address that the, the um, the issuance of the emergency regulation. So that's why, under that I E M A statute, I'd say in section four, you would want to have it say the mayor or village president, because that's just kind of the language in the I E M A statute. I don't particularly have an issue, um, cause I know we've addressed this before in the past. And I've, and I'll talk to Michael about this again, cause I know I've talked to him about it in the past, that the concern is about the, the village board. I think the, Mike was rationale regards to that because of the way that I E M A statute is written. It um, kind of refers to the, the um, declarations being made by the mayor or village president. But I don't have an issue, um, you know, in regards to, in, in particular, I think you're talking about in particular, A. Um, I don't have, I don't have per se an issue in regards to that. I think, you know, B, emergency staffing, I'm okay with actually adding the mayor and village manager. I think the, the rationale is that, that the disaster declarations are technically supposed to be done by the mayor. And then there's a, a question if you're really to do them every seven days. There are some people who believe you should do it every seven days. I think that's kind of impractical because your board is unable to be, um, you know, to do, to do that. And especially, I think when I talked to Michael, the mayor wanted to make sure that you all got to see this for it. You know, instead of doing it just every seven days. But, you know, I believe in section four, because of that I E M A, the disaster declarations, the way the language is written, it makes kind of reference to the presiding officer that, in your case, being the mayor making that declaration.
Okay, uh, well, let me go to, uh, can we go back to section three A about the emergency purchase? Now, I mean, uh, unless the mayor and the village manager, I, I, I think um, Mrs. Mrs. E has always uh, kept me informed. I don't think it's been anything that's been of a, a major purchase, but I mean, at this point, want to try to keep track of what funds is going out at this point. Because we're, we're at a tight squeeze at this point. So, I mean, what would we, would we have a limit on what's, what's being purchased? Cause I, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, this is somewhat what uh, some villages kind of run into where they were afraid that purchases were gonna be made, but they didn't know the limit, the limitation.
Uh, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, trustee. I, I, I understand exactly where you're coming from on that. And I guess I would defer to the board on how you would want it to be there. The idea is we just, I think, because this is under that I E M A statute and it makes they, it actually makes the exact language it makes reference to is, I just added in there, is essentially the uh, principal executive officer. Um, and we've always uh, have done that as, as the mayor or the village president. So I'm okay though with the language. It's just, you know, that's, that's as a board. I understand your concern, cause you're concerned about uh, checks and balances, which is, you know, uh, uh, always a valid concern to have.
Yeah. And actually, that's what it boils down to, the checks and balances. And, you know, i- if, if it's been managerial and the village manager uh, has always submitted to us what she's doing and, and I'm, and again, I just want the board to know that uh, madam village manager has called me and gave me a regular briefing like every Friday. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, sometimes on a Thursday. And uh, she let me know what's going on financially with the COVID nineteen. So uh, uh, and I think she did mention that there were, uh, I want to say she mentioned them, that, that there were grants or that there were opportunities that we may have to grab money to recover. Um, if you can correct me, madam village manager. So when I seen this, I didn't know. I told her that I was fine whatever the village had to do. Long as it's under five thousand dollars, because that means that she really didn't have to go. And then also, the contracts that are here, I, I don't, I don't think we need to enter a new contract with anybody cause we already have them and, and, and a lot of them is, is expect, you know, it's already expected. So I, I yield my time, mayor. I, I, those are the, you know, I seen this and, and the language more was more was, mine was more towards legal and considering the form of government we have.
Question. Mayor, can I be recognized?
Trustee Williams.
Okay, like that was uh, part of my que- uh, question. We already have the bad laws in here that as long as um, they only spend under five thousand dollars, everything is, is okay. Why do we need to put something else in here? Why can't it stay the way it is?
It's already.
It, go ahead, trustee McMullin.
Mayor, may, may I be?
Trustee, go ahead. Go ahead.
Now, no purchases, it's my understanding that no purchases uh, can be made uh, by the mayor or by the village manager if it's above five thousand dollars, right?
That's what I'm saying. It's already there. We already got.
They need, they need the approval of the board. So we don't have a mayor type of uh, strong government. We just don't. So they need, in anything that is purchased in a village, they need our consent to do so over five thousand dollars.
Exactly. But this is what I'm saying. So why do we have this on this agenda? Because we already had that in order.
It's just updating the declaration, trustee.
The, in order for the declaration to be under the statute, um, in order, you can't extend it beyond seven days without the consent of the board. So your original declaration um, technically expired, even though the governor's declaration is still in existence. So the board has to consent in order to, to extend that original declaration. It's also important out that on Friday, the, actually they, the Illinois Open Meeting Act was amended. So while going forward, you know, we're still under the governor's declaration of May twenty ninth. But if you wanted to do a, another remote meeting, let's say the governor extended the um.
Jail to end.
The, yeah, they extended the uh, the declaration for, through the end of June. If, if you guys hadn't extended this declaration, technically, we would have to do an in-person meeting. As long as you've had that, now you could still, still have a, a meeting for a um, a remote meeting, even though under the new stat, I gotta check to see. I think it went into effect immediately, but it was definitely approved on Friday. At the very minimum, um, the, either the mayor or the attorney or the, the village manager will have to be there in person. This was just, it was one of the things that they approved on Friday.
It was the, the mayor would have to be there in person.
Yeah.
So, so in, in other words, we, we have um, I heard the mayor said, I can't see him on my screen. He said it was updated. Um.
No, to update, Theo, to, to update it.
To update it? Okay. So I just, well, uh, what is, what is, what is it that changed that we, we're doing this? I mean, in the old declaration, what is the difference?
The, the mask in public.
And extending.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear madam clerk. What did you say, madam clerk?
And also to extend from the original uh, declaration of emergency. It was for seven days and this is to officially extend it. Am I correct, attorney Miller?
Yes.
To extend it, put it in writing what has already been done. We're still in the shelter in place. Ending in the middle of phase two of the governor's declaration. This is as I understand it. So this is to, for the board to approve extending the original declaration of emergency. Because the board wasn't holding meetings, not even zone meetings for over a month.
So have we made any emergency purchase? There have been over five thousand and it's been a village manag- manager. You, you've, you've been making the purchases, am I correct? Cause you, you told, you called me and told me.
Yes, I'm the only one that's been doing, that's been doing the purchase. And generally, I let, gotta let somebody know even before I do it. And it was emergency. We're in a situation where I had to purchase for police, fire, but I didn't have a choice. But it was under, it was under the requirement. Had it been over, then I would have called, had the clerk mayor called a special meeting, so.
Well, I'm gonna be honest, uh, I, I'm, I'm with trustee Williams. I, I would like it to stay the way it is. I don't know what we need to do with this. Mr. Miller, I would like it the way it was. Um, that's just, that's just me tonight. I'm, I'm.
I don't have um, a problem if you guys want the ori- I thought the original language, I, I think it, I thought that the original declaration did say mayor and village manager, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, cause I don't have it in front of me. But I don't have a problem with you guys approving it and we change it to reflect the original language. Whether, whatever, if it says mayor and village manager, or if it just says um, village manager with consent of the mayor and the board of trustees, I'm fine with that as well.
I think this one, the language is the same as it was.
It is.
The language is the same, except it extends the timeframe.
Right.
The date, as a matter of fact, had we been passing them every seven days, if the board had been meeting. Every time one expired, which it has to be approved every seven days or the either. Because we got the seven actual declaration for seven weeks. I'm sorry, ten weeks.
Ten weeks.
Into effect. So this resolution just. Into effect. So this resolution just authorized those and extends the date from one week to next week.
Okay.
So right now, it's, can I, may I have you recognized?
Go ahead, trustee.
So right now, it says that the declaration shall take effect immediately and it shall expire forty-five days from the effective date set for therein. Is that what you're talking about, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, but, but that in the declaration, as attorney stated, that the actual authority extends seven days and they should be every seven days.
All right.
Right. So what happened? Yeah. Technically, that original declaration is only for seven days unless you guys agree to extend it. So this would be the agreed, agreement to extend it, and you're now taking it to the forty-five, um, to the forty-five days. Um, the question would be is if you guys want the language as is, or if, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, my thing is that you guys, they extended, so you're allowed to do the emergency purchases or, or emergency staffing. If you wanted to say, and I'll defer to you guys, if you wanted to say, um, village administrator with consent of mayor and, and board of trustees, I'm fine with that. Um, you know, my main thing is that you guys have it so you can make those emergency purchases under Iema. Then also, the clerk can submit the, to, to the grant because, um, she's, and I'm, I know that the clerk submitted the form, I mean, the village manager, I'm sorry, um, um, village manager, um, submitted the form to get the FEMA reimbursement, um, that is out there because there was a form that you had to have submitted. Submitted. I just want to make sure you guys are able to, um, have the declaration so that, um, it can, I don't think they're gonna reject you if it's not done. But it just makes it, I think it gives you a stronger case to get done if you've got all of those kind of those I's dotted and T's crossed.
So if, if we amend it, it will not affect the ILCS, Joe? It will not?
No, it, it won't affect the, 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 I would tell you is that I would keep section four because it, the actual declaration in the statute refers to the, essentially to the mayor making the declarations. But the other two that you're concerned about, if you want to say the village manager with the consent of the mayor and board of trustees, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Right, because, because that's how it's been. It's more like the village manager and the mayor would call and, and I don't know about the other trustees, but the mayor, village manager would call me and so I, I mean, I'm fine because it, it was doing it according to how it would, uh, uh, according to village. Yes, in section four, I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I, I, it can stay like that because I've seen that language other places.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Go ahead, trustee Franklin.
Go ahead, uh, so I just want to say, uh, to kind of speak to what Mr. Miller was saying. We want to make sure that we are in compliance and we extend it because, um, everybody's trying to be reimbursed. And we want to make sure that we crossing all our T's and dotting our I's just to make sure that we're putting ourselves in a good position because as you can imagine, there's so many municipalities who are spending money and falling into hard times because of COVID-19. So we just want to make sure that we're, we're doing everything that we're supposed to. And also, um, just to give you a sense of comfort, the, I, I checked before the meeting, the language is the same. It's, um, it reads the same as the previous. And my understanding was that we were just simply voting to extend it to stay in compliance to make sure that we're able to be reimbursed for the funds that are spent. So, um, and, and I also found out that this is, some other municipalities are making the same, uh, votes to do, to, for the extension because it has to be extended every seven days. So those are my statements.
And we want to keep the doors open for any potential reimbursements and potential grant funding.
Yeah, but, but also, can I, Mayor, can I be recognized?
Go ahead, trustee.
Yeah, and, and look, he- here's the thing, uh, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the, the ma- a lot of the other towns are different forms of government. Some of them, the mayor is a strong mayor, some are not. I, I figured since we're doing it the same way, I just want to keep us involved so that we would know. So I'm gonna make a motion because in my eyes, I'm gonna be honest, Mayor. Has been communicating, I don't know, I'm sure they could be communicating with all of us. So I just want to make sure that language that the board is also involved.
Mm-hmm. I appreciate that.
So, so, you know, um, if no one else, I just want to make a motion to include in, in, in the section that the mayor and the board. I want to add the board so that we, we're, so we're, no, I'm not concerned because the mayor has been called, the mayor, I would tell everybody right now, anybody listening, yes, Mayor Rudess and, 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 uh, Madam Village Manager has called me every week since this crisis happened. And in fact, sometime I'm even shocked because the mayor said, what you think? Then Ms. E have called, well, what you think? So we have been making purchases. But Mrs. E has called me because of grants, uh, what you said, trustee Franklin. And I want to make sure that this too is, uh, available. So, uh, if I can make a, I just want to make a motion, we'll pass this if that, uh, after mayor in section A, excuse me, section three A, that it's, it reflects to say mayor and the board and on the per- and, and the sentence, and also only emergency staffing.
Two, six.
It's also a section. Okay.
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. Miller, uh, before I make the sec- so even though the village manager handles the staffing, the mayor still has to do it? That's the part that was confusing to me.
Uh, trustee, uh, uh, according, according to Illinois Emergency Management, when it's a federal or state disaster, the mayor is basically in charge of emergency operations.
But, yes, so to answer your question, I'm okay with the language. I do think you shouldn't have the language where it says, you know, if you want to say it says village manager with consent of the mayor and board trustees, I'm fine with that. The I, the Iema Act does specifically kind of refer to your presiding officer, which in your case would be the mayor. But I, I don't have an issue with that, um, because it sounds like that's what's going on anyway. But just be aware, we just want to have that language so that they, um, if, if they do. Yeah, that you're compliant. I don't think FEMA is gonna go through your declarations, but I don't know. This is a once in a, a hundred year thing, so we want to just have whatever, we want to make sure we have it updated, that you've updated now because technically, the first declaration had to have been approved, had to been, to be extended, had to be done within seven days. So we're doing it now. So I think we're fine because no, as far as I know, most places, we're not able to do it within seven days just because of the timeframe. But, uh, I'm okay with, with, with your request. I think it just will, uh, it, it should say have that language in there because the mayor, so if you say mayor and board of trustees, I think that will cover any questions that, um, FEMA may have in regards to your declarations.
Okay. Madam Village Manager, I don't see you on my screen. Did you get that first motion or that, or the first, uh, in section three that I made? Before?
Yeah.
Okay. And for emergency staffing, the mayor, and I'm, trustees, I'm just saying, I, this is what the motion I'm gonna make is that the mayor and village manager, uh, with the consent of the board because the two of them have been doing it, so the mayor and village manager. And, and after that, I think everything else in the language is just perfectly fine.
I agree. So, trustee Brooks, may I speak?
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Just so unclear, this is, you're making this motion. Could you restate your motion, please?
Okay. Motion to add
the board.
In section three, if you go down to A where it say emergency purchase.
Now, if you would just, just restate with the section.
I'm sorry, some, uh, somebody, somebody mute. I can't hear. They, they're coming over, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, go again, Madam Clerk, so I can hear you.
I would just like for you to restate your motion.
Oh, motion.
To include the section and paragraph, you know, and the language for your motion.
Okay. Um, section, section three, under emergency regulations and orders. And it's gonna be paragraph A for emergency purchasing. It's gonna be in sentence number two, after the mayor, if we can just add the mayor and the board because that's who's been doing it all this time. And then we go to paragraph B of the very same section, emergency staffing. Accordingly, in section two, it says accordingly, the mayor and we add the village manager, or if we want to add village administrator in concurrence of the board, is authorized and directed to implement such emergency.
Hold on, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
With consent. So could I also ask that you put your motion in writing and email it to me so it'll be accurate?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I can do that tonight. Yes. So, so, so that no one, and I, I don't think, I hope I didn't confuse anybody. I was just adding the village manager on an emergency staffing. And, and really, if I'm not mistaken, I see Joe came off, everything will still operate the same, and I think this still will qualify for what we need to do.
Yeah, I think so as well. Okay.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion by trustee Brooks and a second by trustee Williams to amend this resolution.
You had a second by who?
Didn't, did not you just say a second?
Yes, uh, trustee Williams, you said something else.
She froze up. Her voice froze up. Madam Clerk's voice froze up.
Oh.
Yeah.
Do you ready for the roll call, Mr. Mayor?
He, he, he's having a technical, he's having a technical problem. He's joining again. Okay.
And second by, motion by Brooks, second by who?
No, it's second by. Williams.
Williams.
Oh, okay, he's back.
Yes, I'm back. And my, the iPad just blinked out.
Okay.
Welcome to the club.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we did have a motion by trustee Brooks and a second by trustee Williams to amend section three of paragraph A, oh, and par- and paragraph B of this resolution to add the village manager with the consent of the mayor board and to add the mayor and the board. Am I correct, sir?
Yes.
And there's a motion and a second. Good roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye to a man.
Trustee Bolden.
Both aye.
Six.
Trustee McMullin.
Both aye.
Mayor Rudess.
Both aye.
That's to approve the amendment. Are we ready for roll call on the resolution as amended?
Yes. Do we need a motion, Madam Clerk?
We have a motion for the item. We just need to add as amended.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Just to remind, it was, the motion was made by trustee Williams and second by trustee Brooks.
Just up.
Huh?
Yes, opposite.
Just up.
It was the opposite, but.
No, this was the main motion, the original. The original motion. Okay.
Uh, okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's, yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bolden.
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both aye.
Mayor Rudess.
Both aye.
Mr. Mayor, that is resolution R twenty twenty dash zero eight.
Eight. Okay. The next, the next item is item F two D, F two E. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement by and between the village of University Park and Ontario Group LLC. Is there a motion?
No, um, Mr. Mayor, that, I, that one was approved. I think that actually we're going to be.
Today, a, a resolution approving and au- and authorizing the execution of a item F two D, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement by and between the village of University Park and Coughlin twenty nineteen dash two H Industrial Owner LLC. Is there a motion?
I got a more question.
We need a motion.
Need a motion first, trustee.
Oh, motion, okay.
Second.
Move by trustee Williams, second by trustee, um, Brooks. Questions?
My question, I got a question.
Ma- uh, trustee Williams?
This is a, the, uh, a settlement that we supposed to have taken care back in two thousand and six. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And so this is already, already approved, uh, in courts. So we should go ahead and, and make this settlement and pay it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor, I'll be recognized.
Trustee, go ahead, Brooks.
Uh, Madam Village Manager, uh, am I, this is tip five, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, my only concern, uh, with the amount. Yeah, it is.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Am I unfrozen yet?
I hear you.
I, I can hear you, uh, trustee.
Okay. Yeah, um.
Everything is working fine.
Okay. Um, the question I have is, um, you know my big question. Tip five, the, you know, for this amount, uh, do we have it in there?
Yes, sir. That's the first, that's the purpose of being a village administrator, is to track that. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I look at D, D, hey. You, you popped up on my screen, D shaking your head up and down. Okay, I look, I just wanted to make sure because we, we, we never had this in executive session or anything, right? I never seen this.
No.
Okay, let me, let me tell you. Without, we can't talk about specific things because it's not an executive session. This is an agreement. But let me tell you, trustee, we have saved millions of dollars, millions of dollars. And I'll be more than happy to provide. I think I, I may have sent a general everybody can have.
Yeah. Let me also.
Now you're froze.
Yeah, yeah, let me also, um, that we've talked to your TIF council, Kathy Orr, and she agrees that, um, this would be something to do in regards, I can't say, I mean, we definitely feel it's saving, you know, millions, yes, maybe at the very minimum, the hundreds of thousands of dollars is what Kathy indicated to us. And she'll, she, and she agrees that it could be more than that. She's like, that's the minimum. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars. I talked to Steve and he thought it was at least a million or so as well, and so.
At, at, at least that we had saved on this one?
Mm-hmm, that you'll be paid by entering into this.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll show you why I said that later.
Yeah, if, yeah, if you just, you can see, my main, uh, uh, my main concern tonight was that, uh, when we pay out that, pay off this, this, uh, out of that if we still had funds, you know, plenty of funds in there.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, I'd be, if we reimburse you, yeah.
Okay, mayor, you have my time.
And the other questions? Trustees, any, any other questions regarding this one?
No.
Roll call, madam clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both aye.
Trustee Franklin.
Both aye.
Trustee Bolden.
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both aye.
Mayor Rudez.
Both aye.
Mr. Mayor, that's resolution or twenty twenty dash zero nine.
Twenty twenty. Okay. And is that, is that all the items, item F two E, everything else?
Yeah, that's. We got one left, don't we?
Not that was pulled.
No.
Those were the only ones pulled from the agenda.
Yes. Okay. I guess I have to just do it from the phone, cause this iPad's just not gonna get me back in, okay. All right, most tip of new business, bills payable. Attached to your approval is a listing of general operating expenses for the village of University Park. That occurred on April the thirty of twenty twenty through May twenty sixth, twenty twenty. General fund, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine and eighty-two. Road and bridge, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two and thirty-nine. Town center fund, fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two and forty. Tiff four, five, and six, all one thousand, payroll fund, three thousand and ten and nineteen. With the grand total of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and four and eighty cent, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Move by trustee Jenkins. Move by trustee Bolden?
Yes.
Second? No second, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody muted.
Sec- second by trustee Williams?
Go ahead and ask me, man.
Go ahead, trustee Brooks.
All right, I don't see Jacilia on this tonight, uh, so.
What happened?
I, I don't know, I don't see her, is she on here?
No, she was supposed to, yeah, I don't, happened, she was supposed to be on here.
Okay, um, a- any, anything that can be answered, Madam Village Manager, could you, uh, uh. Just forward to me an email or respond at minimum, if, if it deals with her.
Okay.
I, I see on here. If I can see the receipts for the petty cash, fifteen thousand, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. Four twenty-three. Check one oh five, two one two, madam clerk, that would be the check number.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Uh, page one.
Page one.
Yeah, I'm gonna go right down the list, go right down the list.
What check number, Brooks?
Uh, that was. Very first one, uh, one oh, one oh five.
Two one two.
Petty cash, fifteen hundred, I wanna see receipts, or if she, if, if you already know, I wanna know what this is about.
Yes, a lot of receipt, it's a combination, it's a bunch of.
Okay, uh.
It was not one, it's just one check and through the month, it may be a receipt, uh, to send somebody to get a. Hypothetically, some ant, I mean, some, uh. Little traps for ants, and maybe whatever, but she's got all the receipts, I'll make sure, she's got the receipt.
Okay, um, I'm going with this one, one oh five, two one three, because I know this is gonna come up. Yes, press. Yeah, yes, press. Newsletter. Three thousand. Four hundred and eighty-one dollars, is this, is this the company, well. I, I, I know that we sent out one already, but.
This one, this one was for the first one, back in September.
Oh, okay, well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, um, some people got, um, some residents have memories like elephants. And it was said on the board that. We're gonna have a newsletter, and you won't have to pay for anything, it won't be no tax dollars.
Well.
I'm just saying, it was said, so, I just wanna make, it, it, you know, we're getting charged for it, and, um. Uh, although my name was only said once, twice maybe, if, uh, you know, you wanna add up. It was a beautiful, this is the first paper, right, the one that I didn't get?
The first one, this is the first one that came out, yeah.
I ain't even, I ain't even get that one, I didn't even get that one, I'm mad, tell them I won't, I. That, they, they didn't even give me mine, uh, very quickly, one oh five, two one six. Did we, what flags did we, cause we had just ordered some flags just two years ago, I hope these are not to go up on the poll.
Uh, these are, uh, if you, I think these, I have to look back at them, I think there was beginning to shred, there was some at the police. Not the police, the fire and the village hall, I have to look to see what, where it went, they were kinda like stripped. And they, uh, wanted to pull it down, so I'll check, give you the exact location.
Okay, I see D and, uh, Liz not in it on that one.
Yeah, I remember that.
We wouldn't have bought the flag if it would have come, you might as well take them down, but I'll, I'll confirm it for you.
Yeah, trust me, but, you know, tattered flags look.
Yeah.
Can't have that.
Well, we, but we replaced the tattered flags, so.
Okay, um, question on one oh five, two four zero, the mosquito company. Now, is the sixteen thousand gonna be for the whole season, or? Right, is this gonna be for the whole season, or it better not be for no backpack?
Is that Clark?
No, it's gonna be for the entire season, trustee, they, we should have actually got it at the beginning, but because of COVID nineteen. They put us back on their schedule, we were pushed back, so this is what we do every year, I had to do a little backtracking on it. Is, to answer your question, the entire season.
Okay, uh.
That's what the federal arrangement says.
Okay, uh, one oh five, two five eight is be- is becoming a new, you know, it's, it's a routine, uh. Check that I see for the Dell Financial Services for PC leases, can I just ask you, are monitors included with their lease?
They just started, before monitors were not included in their leases, now they are, it was something. Before they didn't, but now they are.
When, when, when did they start, when did, when did the computer monitor start?
Uh, the leases, I know it was after I came before, monitors were actually purchased from Sam's.
Okay.
They were actually, there were five monitors purchased for Sam's, but of course, that was done, I didn't have anything to do with that, but. They were purchased from the Sam's, so now it's our lease agreement.
Okay, um, I'm on page two now, trustees, um, we got, um. One oh five, two seven six. And one oh five, two eight nine, which seems to be the clubhouse rental. On for two fifty and five hundred, how did, how clubhouse bill end up? Being, uh, our responsibility?
Okay, well, trustee, you're gonna see many coming along, and what we've been doing. We've been deducting it from what's due to the clubhouse, what happened is, uh, Ms. Johnson told me, she was very upset. She called and she said, when I went, since COVID nineteen was in, when I went to get my deposit. And I said, well, why didn't you get it back, they just told me to go see the village of University Park. I said, what explanation, they said, to go see the village of University Park, that was it, since then. So, that is our building, we have management up there, there is an issue as to the money, I can't. Discuss, and we're meeting, as you know, tomorrow, I, I don't wanna discuss it publicly until.
Right.
It details it, you know, but it is our responsibility, and we deduct it from a monthly amount, and that's all.
Okay, so, um.
And there's several.
Well, let me make, well, I seen only two on this bills payable.
That's because of the period of time. The period. Coming on the next.
Yeah, somebody need to mute, they, their phone, they, they got the phone on at the same time. Okay, um. One oh five, two seven eight, and one oh five, two seven nine, I wanna make sure, Ms. E, is this what we had discussed in that email of making sure that lawn dogs? Is this that one month in advance, so the trustees know, okay.
Yeah, and wait a minute, yes, but, since we don't come back to the board, and I'll explain in my report. Why we're putting these on the agenda when it is time for me to do my report, we have one other month. To compensate for June one, because the board doesn't have a meeting, June one, so I have to put two months, an existing month. And a prior month, and that's the only way we're gonna be current, but believe me, you. He will not get the check until the first, so we extensively talked about this, so we won't have problems anymore.
Okay, trustees, this is, uh, that, this is just follow up from the, what, what, what Ms., uh, Madam Village Manager and I are talking about, this is in reference to. That, uh, email I sent you all this weekend trying to stay ahead of, uh, the lawn service.
Okay.
Uh.
So he has two on here, one for now and one for June, he gets paid on the fifteenth of every month, contractually, fifteenth of every month.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna ask a, 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 a question that might be difficult and it might not. Where's the Sam's Club card at on here, because Jacilia said, Jacilia clearly said. To me in a meeting, and I have her statement here, that, that, that card. We have to pay. A month in advance. In order to make sure, or how did she say, we stay, i- 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 uh, stay in front to make sure that. We pay on some of these bills, the way the bills are rolling in, and it's not on this. Now, I see the Menards, if the trustees can turn to the invoice approval body fund report. On page five.
Okay.
On the check registry. They're not on the check registry, but I see all the Menards supply. Starting from four, four seventeen all the way to five fourteen. Miscellaneous purchases, I don't see anything over five hundred. Uh, all of my supplies, so. Why we have on it?
We haven't gotten a statement from, um, Sam's, we have temporarily suspended the account. We have to do this in order to begin to answer some of the questions, but. As soon as we get the statement, the statement will show the date of the statement from Sam's, but we haven't gotten. The recent statement from Sam, we verify, we've not gotten.
You suspended everyone's usage?
Yes, we suspended it. Until further notice, we gotta get it together, we gotta do some, set some rules and do some things, so it's suspended right now.
Okay.
They didn't suspend, we did.
Right, right, I just want, right, make that clarification, and then Menards, Menards is just so happy it wouldn't be on the check registry report, but. That's an accident, right?
No, no, Menards is not a credit card.
It's an account.
It's an account, it's, it's an account, so as we get some bills, it goes on there, whatever, so Menards billing cycle is totally different than Sam's. So we got, and some of these, we're got, uh, I just, to put them all, whatever bills come in, we have to post all bills. So just let me, just let me get my report, trustee, and you understand.
Oh, I, I'm about to yield my time, but I, I, I was gonna say, this magic, magically, the check registry report don't have Menards on it like it normally do.
No, no, that, that, no, it was, oh, wow, that's, that's not, and it wasn't. Everything is being posted that comes in, trustee, believe me when I tell you, everything is being posted. When it comes in, everything's being posted.
I can't, I, 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 I can't show it here, cause I got my university park all in front, but. It, it's widening me out, but it's not on here, it's not on here.
What's not on?
The, the Menards, it's not on the check reg-. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not here to stir, I'm just saying.
No, I mean.
Check the books, make sure they're right.
Yeah, let's fix it, let's fix it. That's all I'm saying, let's fix it, okay, mayor, uh, I yield my time.
Trustee Bolden? You got unmute, got unmute? Unmute, unmute?
Who?
Trustee.
Cute, still muted.
You're muted, trustee Bolden?
How about that?
Yeah, yeah. You were speaking to air.
I was, I was, I was muting and unmuting, I was just saying, trustee Brooks makes me crazy when he goes through all this, and I'm going now checking the same thing. My question is, who's in charge, who, this Sam's card, who's in charge of that, and who has it?
Yeah, who has them?
Okay, I'll tell you who has it, not, uh. Okay, the, um. The chief and the deputy chief of the fire department.
Okay.
And he also has two lieutenants, now, these were done and approved before I even came on board, September twenty-third. But I'm factoring all of this through investigation, so it's four from the fire department. It's Public Works, and it's Jacilia, and as of recent, is the police chief. Those who are, who has the cards, no one else, that's it.
They all using the same card?
Uh, yeah, you use same membership, different person is on the card, yes, uh-huh.
I was thinking, okay, so Public Works, Jacilia, and who was the last one?
Uh, the, it's four from the fire department.
Uh-huh.
Recently, Chief Police Wilson.
Oh, Wilson.
And, and, uh-huh, and, um. Uh, Jacilia, those are then, Department of Public Works.
Okay.
So that's it.
So that's gonna be cleared up, you're gonna, that's gonna be cleared up in your report somewhere along the way?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So there's seven cards?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to clear that up as soon as possible.
Well, we've temporarily suspended the account, that's the start of it.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
All right, a- anybody else? Roll call, madam.
Yes, I do, yes, I do. Wait, ma'am.
Go ahead, trustee McMullin.
All right. One oh five, two three two, two three three.
What is it?
That's in reference, it's, uh. Check number. One oh five, two three three, and check one oh five, two three four. And, uh, if you can explain to me the, um. The three thousand and seven seventy-one, seventy-two, misunderstanding.
Oh, that's on here every month.
TIF administrator.
That's the TIF administrator.
The reason I brought that up is because.
Those are three different TIFs.
Okay, when we pay the attorneys to do the same thing, or what?
No, no.
And what do they do?
She's the administrator, shut up.
I'm the TIF administrator, meaning I address any concerns that come in, I deal with our attorneys. That are representing members that are, that own the businesses such, we go to deal with Kathy, where we deal with negotiations. Um, any changes in existing status, so we use her on an as needs basis, we don't use her every day. I'm on TIF, all the TIFs, um, every day, I'm dealing with closing, the financial, the whole nine yards. And believe me, it's been a learning experience since I've been over here, and I've been cleaning up a lot of stuff, now that's, that's the TIF administrator.
Okay, then, uh, tell me, what is it? I wanna.
I wanna I wanna know what is the scope of the Lawn Dogs landscaping because the farm itself is like um overgrown prairie. Right now, so what is.
Did you go out there today?
Lawn Dogs um landscaping though.
Okay, Lawn Dog has eleven locations they do within one week, eleven locations. So Public Works, uh sometimes me go out, do follow up, whatever the case may be. But um uh Regal Farm is done, Regal Farm is done, they came out Sunday as well.
Okay.
Okay, first of all.
Who did it, the the Public Works or Lawn Dogs itself?
Lawn Dog, Lawn Dog, they did it, so I get a list that he has to turn in every week. We just started him turning in that in terms of accountability, he has to tell me during the course of the week if it's been mowed. If it has not been mowed, so on all the eleven under the contract during this heavy rain. There were not, there were some that were not mowed, they tried going out and I went evidence and I took pictures, there were big sink holes. Where they tried to mow it and their equipment was stuck in the in the.
That'll happen.
It was horrible, but but they're on it, they're out there and they're checking off accordingly, so we. We got a call in kind of relationship.
Okay. Point of point of reference, I know that um trustee Brooks brought it up. And uh I want you to uh clarify it for us and I'll talk to the mayor about it and uh we talked about the. The lawn service for two days for seventeen thousand, was that bill paid for or what? Because I do believe I wanted to take it off and I think we came up with it and we took it off, but. Brooks had pointed out that it was paid on Janu- it paid in January, but that shouldn't be the case.
Okay, let me just tell you something.
Right.
My meeting that I attended, you all hit me with that, you said take it off. I aborted the check, we took it off. Then the courts, then the courts came after us. The courts came after us because what was was executed was what they call an open ended contract.
Right, yep.
Meaning no limitations on it, none, for as long as you had him out there. That contract could go on and could go on, but the kicker is for this seventeen thousand dollars. He did the work and uh cited his locations and what the cost was, where we're in the legal catch twenty two. That at this point, we gotta pay it or we end up out out of the door paying thirty five thousand dollars.
Because that was only a partial, is that correct?
Yes ma'am, yes trust, yes ma'am, we're in a catch twenty two right now. Yeah, because the attorney attached his fees onto it.
Was the check cut and uh was the check cut?
No more cuts, no more checks have been cut until I can talk to this board and get clarity. That's why I put it back on there because it's become a legal issue now with the seventeen thousand dollars, the work has been done. Whether it should have been a stop order or something happened and it never happened, you allowed him. You, meaning anybody plural, not you, 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 but you, whoever that plural form is, allow him. To co- complete the work based on his costs, so we got it at this point, it's seventeen thousand dollars. And we got to pay the seventeen thousand dollars, that's where we are, there is no love lost anywhere. Check has not been nothing, we're waiting, I'm waiting on you all to understand our position. Then, that's why it's on here, then I will move forward, no check has been paid, none, zilch.
So eventually we, so eventually we got to pay this, right?
Bottom line, with legal fees if we don't pay it now, yes.
Well, I I I tell you what, what can we do to eliminate the legal fees and get this behind us?
Pay seventeen thousand dollars.
For the work they've done.
Let me, let me ask you this, who approved this seventeen thousand dollars for the cut, cutting the lawn?
You ready for this?
Yes, I'm ready, I'm ready.
Okay, there has not been a signed contract anywhere.
But I can find them.
No one has a signed contract, no one. But but the village allowed him to do the work. So that's the reality of it, I hate to boom, you asked me, so I told you the the answer.
That's what, that's what you're saying.
That's right, this is the last chance that we have to decide to pay it or when it comes back. They have a right to do what they have to do, they're gonna get their money. They're gonna leave us to do whatever, we've been threatened legally in writing from the from their attorney and it's went through our attorney as well.
Okay, didn't this stuff read that it's gonna be cut and when it gets cut, it he has to buy different equipment? And all of this stuff to do this this uh lawn?
You are, I have been looking for that language. There is no such language, not in the contract we're operating on. I have tried to, I've been trying to, I've been hearing it, hearing it, hearing it. So there is nothing in this agreement saying that they have to buy this, 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 this equipment, there's nothing there.
So i- is it true that uh Pete gave this authorization for them to do this? He signed, he signed the bill, the original agreement or proposal was signed by the village manager.
That the, the bill I saw clerk.
Right, and that's all we've seen.
Not seeing, but the bill I saw, he authorized the payment of that bill.
So that's John Pate, right?
And he acted representing the village of University Park. So whether he was legally able to do it or not, he faulted, it is still the responsibility of the village. Because he signed as a legal representative.
And if we don't pay it, it continues to grow.
Yeah, because he had the apparent authority as your village manager to approve that, so once he approved it. He has added apparent authority, it comes down to you. Especially since they did do some work, if they hadn't done anything, then maybe we have some, but they did work.
Yes.
Now you see why I say consensus of the board on everything.
Consensus of the board, I agree.
Now you see why I say that.
I've been getting a lot of that happen and my problem is I've, you know, turned into Melly Jackson and that's okay, I don't mind.
Can I make a statement too? That also shows that, I don't wanna say Pate, well, whatever, it shows that. If you knew anything about landscaping, no way in God's earth. Should we have been charged those amounts for those days or those hours that he charged? Cause I like said, I have been in the landscaping business, worked with the landscapers and I know we didn't do that for the, we wouldn't charge the city of Chicago, which was on our contract. We would not do that for that man hours and for that money he was charging, so it was just like it was approved, but you didn't look at. The the fees he was going to pay associated with each one of those jobs, that was just crazy on our part, we let it happen, so.
Wow, okay. It is what it is.
Yeah, and it has to be paid, like you said, the work was done, it has to be paid, but that's just crazy.
So when are we gonna talk about it, when are we gonna do it?
There had been executive session.
Well, it's on, it's on a, it should uh. So you all let me know when you wanna talk about it, whatever it is, we gotta do a response.
We have discussed this and.
Like yesterday.
The last I remember an executive session is that it was the consensus to fight the company.
You don't, you don't, like the attorney says, we don't have two legs to stand. It's too late.
I I understand that, but that was the consensus, I understand that, but that was the consensus of the board in our last executive session regarding this scenario.
But you're gonna pay more for the attorney that it would take just to.
I understand, I understand.
So that's why we need to regroup and and discuss this again and get it done.
And exec, yes.
We don't have the money to keep on paying this, paying this.
Actually, we were misled by Mr. Pate then.
All right, you got to end the debate, Madam Clark, let's do the roll call.
Trustee Williams. Vote aye. Trustee Brooks.
Vote no.
Trustee Jenkins Bell. Trustee Jenkins Bell. Trustee Franklin.
Hey, clarify the vote, it's been so much conversation, I'm trying to make sure.
That's my question, thank you too too. That's my question, what are we voting on?
The bills as read by the mayor with the motion by trustee Bowden and the second by trustee Williams. So far, the roll call is trustee Williams. Somebody moved. I've got a lot of background. Brooks and Jenkins Bell have voted against. Now, getting to trustee Franklin for his vote.
Vote aye.
Trustee Bowden. Trustee Bowden.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
This is to pay the bills.
Vote aye, because we need to pay the bills with with some concerns.
Okay, trustee McMullin.
Vote no.
Mayor is.
Vote aye to pay the bills.
We scathed by, it's approved.
Okay, ma- ma- manager, you have a report manager understanding?
Yes, I'm gonna go straight through, so if you got your belt, I'm going straight through this.
I'll give you a printed report.
No, it's handwritten, it's handwritten. Okay, um first of all, as the mayor board know and back in January and February. I explained the development of we what we call preferential hiring, we put it online. We put the application out to have people to come in to apply for positions with the village. Uh as long as they were eighteen or over, uh we told them how they were done. Uh Ms. Neva had it online, they downloaded the application, they put the app- application in an envelope. They bring them in to the village hall and they would have my name on them. That's to protect the privacy of whatever of the person submitting the application, from those. Uh we only got three applications. Now, now that we can open and tell the public what we're taking those applications for. We're taking them for from eight to one thousand for placement with Amazon. It was explained during negotiations that we will provide for them a summary Excel of all those individuals. Those individuals that are unemployed, those individuals that are underemployed. To make application from the age of eighteen and over. We indicated that we will take that information, summarize it, put it on an Excel sheet. And keep it updated through the employment provisions of the Amazon, we wanna be ready for them and. Um I'm just encouraging people how important people in the the village of University Park have been complaining, no job. No job, no job, we have an opportunity now where that's extra special mile is being run, just trying to get. People to make application, okay, so that's the first thing, the other thing with that is Clayco. The building, Clayco Construction, the builders of the Amazon uh facility has met with us. They have also put me in contact with and we have fairly frequent conversations. With the director of diversity and inclusion, diversity means just what it says. Inclusion means exactly what it says, so what we're trying to do is right now. Is to get all contractors and subcontractors and all the. Construction trade to get call at the village at seven oh eight five four six four. Five one, and there have been some calling and left voicemails. We've so far got one minority contractor certified. One, phase one is con- this happens to be a concrete contractor. You wicked if, but they're requesting because this is a union shop. Requesting that all contractors that make application, give me a call, I'll go through the procedures with them. Tell them what they have to do, if they're VA, WBE, whatever the case may be, I'll take them A through C. And I'll also make copies, get them licensed through the village, I take that information, put it together. And I pass it on to the director of diversity and inclusion at Clayco. But they gotta come through the village first and we're talking about village of University Park contractors. And this is a village of University Park contractor and we're encouraging people to make application. For jobs out there, not just construction job, but for jobs in the plant, okay? So we put it out there, the other thing, um the second thing that I wanna mention to you all is. Um myself and um Jacilia has been meeting with all department heads. We've asked um all department heads around the end of April to submit to us. Their preliminary budget, so we gave them an opportunity on a conference call. To go through their entire budget, I made no comments, yes, no, maybe, yes, sir, no, sir. It was up to that department head to justify and explain to us what they were submitting. Every department head did that, okay, we took that information, we're developing a new format for our budget. And this format for the budget would be a format with what they call a surplus budget. Meaning that of unused dollars by the end of fiscal year. We're looking at some of those dollars being escrow, we learned about this. Went to the New League Cities Conference, in fact trustee Williams was in every session, this is probably the most lucrative way. Of the village to begin to do major things like when it comes up, there have been massive. Road work over here that needs to be done and we know now for a fact, there's gonna be a substantial reduction. In motor fuel tax receipts, we had anticipated a fifty percent increase, but COVID nineteen came in. There were uh quite a few folk that were not driving and as you you know. About motor fuel tax dollars, it comes from this, that comes on motor fuel in the state of Illinois. Based on your relation, uh you get that percentage, well, we've already been told and I've talked with uh Senator. Uh me, Representative DeLuca for quite some time, trying to get an enroad of what to look for. Well, the village better, we better strap up because there's going to be a substantial reduction. In the amounts that we're getting and I just wanna get one clarity for those citizens that may have their bills. Their tax bills, they need to really look at their tax bill to see that the highest. Uh recipient of tax dollars are for the school districts that serve University Park. The village of University Park is at the bottom of the totem pole, which means that what we're used to getting. We will not be getting those kinds of dollars anymore and that's why. I am looking after going at things with the grants and with uh having uh the Antero Group. Stats backup submit these applications so the village can get money. And so what I do is pre obviously. And so what I do is pre obviously that comes in, uh, through, a lot of folk know I'm at University Park. I get notes of this, notes of that. What you're gonna do, hey Ernestine, this is out here, get this. Antero Groups get notification, hey, this out here. Missy, what about this, this? And this is how we're doing. And just mention this one other thing under budget. First of all, um, with the, uh, the budgets that come on, I'm gonna explain down the line how we intend to operate with the budget. All the department heads had their opportunity. I mess about some of these department heads, even though they've been told and I meet with department heads once a month since I've been village manager. Every month I meet with, uh, department heads. They give their reports and I give what I'm expecting out of them and I outline some outstanding issues. I encourage each department heads to work with each other. But I do want them to somewhat stay in their lane. If your department head is public work and your department head was, uh, IT, whatever, please stay in your lane. You were deemed the department head because of your skill set in there. We have, or we've had some department heads directing, giving other department head directives. We don't do that anymore. We don't do that anymore. We've got to learn how to work together. And if we can't work together, I had one instance today where two department heads working together and they came to me and we're gonna do something a little different that's gonna serve both departments. So that has been the problem with a lot of employees at University Park. They've worked in isolation in their own corner and will not work with other departments. Well, there, it's beginning, everybody's coming out of their nest. They're knowing that it's gonna take the other department and everybody has their own leadership role. The other thing I want to mention is there are three, there are two changes in our accounting process. This is what I kept alluding to, two changes. The first change I submitted, I had to amend. I did it verbally. But the second, um, I amended it in writing. I CC'd it to trustees. So trustees will know what the process is and that is, if it is in your budget, and by the way, we're setting up right now ADP, we're gonna go to a monthly expenditure summarization. Each of the trustees will get actuals. You all have heard that word, where you're getting ready to get them. You're gonna get actuals on the expenditures per department, per line. There will be no excuse on it there. Expenditures is gonna be based on the input, first the requisition process, the approval process, the input and the output is gonna be the monthly summaries you're gonna get. Every department head is gonna get a monthly sum. In other words, month of May, in June, they're gonna get a summary of all the expenditures that have taken place in May, uh, May one, two thousand and twenty. As you know, it's the beginning of a new budget year. They will get a monthly summary very quickly. I'm just gonna make it as simple as possible on this. First of all, they're gonna keep their lines and budgets because of what I started to say earlier. I initially said one hundred dollars and that was really being tough. That's called total control. Total control. But they're getting these salaries, make them earn the salaries and to follow directives. So I changed it and put it in writing that no department head, notice I didn't say co-department head, I didn't say employee, I said department head can obligate, can obligate five hundred or more dollars per month without an approved signature from me. If I'm down and out in Beverly Hills or ill or hospitalized, I got Jocelia on this hip. She will get the authorization in my absence to sign it as per EBBF this date. Trustees, you all may think this is a little hard, but if you want me to control the money, please allow me to control the expenditure. We're gonna do this. Each department head has a requisition. The department heads, if it's over five hundred dollars, they get the cost of this amount that they want to encumber. They get the cost. We then look at the budget. And that if it configures with that, the need is there, I sign off, we order and obligate. I've approved. When that bill comes in, the village has no question, there's no question. There is backup to show that we followed the procedure and whatever. If it is failed to be done, adverse action will be administered to these department heads. Adverse actions. Now, let me tell you something. The problem I'm finding with all these bills, that all these questions that you trustees and indirectly through the public, they're, they've gotta be getting a lot of this information from somewhere. It's not accurate, but they're on the right trail. But the point is, and I can't justify it because most of this stuff happened before I came on board, September twenty-third. The obligation for all the furniture in the village hall, the obligation for the TVs. This was obligated before I came in. I know I'm getting a lot of heat. You can continue. I'm not in the kitchen, so, uh, the heat can be there. That is, was not my responsibility. But I'm trying to assure that these kinds of things don't happen. But through backup, I found out who got what, when, how it was done. And that need not be discussed. It's water over the dam. It happened under another administration. We can't cry over spilled milk. All we can deal with is putting some controls in place and that's what I intend to do. The requisition, which means that in Jan, say in May, first month of May, somebody decides that, oh, Miss E, I got to have this, this wheel with some mags on it hypothetically. First of all, and they may find out that this wheel may be two thousand dollars of prey, I mean a pair. Just hypothetically. First of all, you got a problem trying to get that by me. It's nowhere that show me a need. I mean, you, you, you get some tires that are great thread, that are comparable for the truck. They don't have to be Gucci tires. They can be Volkswagen tires, but they can be tires with a great warranty, whatever. Well, I'm treating this like it were my own money and technically it is. You know, I've been called chief. You can call me what you want. But you can get whatever you want if you can strategically put it in a, in a pattern and learn how to spend your money. And that's the, that's the direction I'm taking on this. I'm telling you because everybody needs to know this. So we are moving forth on that. We're gonna get actuals, monthly summary of expenditures, department heads are getting summaries of expenditures. Anything over five hundred dollars a month has to be, um, before it's actually, um, obligated, has to be approved. And what does obligation mean? You may call somebody verbally and say, I need five of those tires. They sent us a bill and we're gonna say, well, who gave you the authorization? They'll say, well, Joe, Joe Blow called me on the phone. Oh, really? When did Joe Blow call you? That means you obligated those dollars without the approval. I'm sure we know what obligate means, approval or obligate. So I'll leave, I'll let right now a dead horse lay. But that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna control that and we're gonna control it through our department heads and we making our deposit, department heads responsible for their employees. Okay, the other thing I want to mention to you guys is, um, and that happened on the Friday, the twenty-second. The other thing I want to mention to you is, um, the, uh, Public Works Department. I have never been any place in America where we're paying such a huge sale bill. So when I started looking, this, this was not me. So I know you're saying, but I just want you all aware, there have been many, many cell phones out there. And some of the cell phones, you still can't get the employees. So this is what we're gonna do in Public Works as such. And I talked about this initially when I came in, uh, with Public Works Director, but I really didn't move forward. But the more I start seeing these monthly cellphone bills, I'm saying, my God, we're living the life of luxury here. And these, some of these cell phones cut out, down, out. And they're gonna be running to you all trying to tell you their needs. But I'd appreciate it if you just take that ball and just would bat mid and knock them back my way because we're gonna put Public Works on a walkie talkie. If they work for us seven to three thirty, then this phone should be their lifeline. We're paying right now. We're paying right now. And trustee Brooks, you should know about, uh, Isburns and all those kinds of things. We're paying for our channel. We don't even use it. I see wasteful dollars. Get the walkie talkies back online. Put it back in Public Works. Let them use it. We'll take them through training just in case they've forgotten. They may, we have a different channel, but we got some of those. One, two, maybe three people in Public Works may remain on the cell phones. But the other employees, I don't have a clue. We look at the bill, the pu- personal use of these phones are ridiculous. Whether you all accept what I'm saying, I'm telling it straight up. It's not, it's public information. We just don't tell who these phone companies are made to, but we gotta stop. So we're looking at all this. I've asked the departments to provide me with each phone number, each telephone, if they have iPads, if they have whatever, whatever, whatever. So we're looking at all of that. Okay? Now, let me just mention to this, um, the university, these stickers, the village stickers are being extended to August thirty-one. August thirty-one village stickers, that way we could, um, get the benefits of those that have had financial restraints and the benefit of those now that we're not driving and the general, like one person told me, well, I'm not gonna buy my sticker. Why? I'm not driving my car. I said, okay, I can understand. And I can understand people where incomes have been cut. So we're extending it to August thirty-one to give everybody an opportunity to properly come in here and buy their sticker. Nothing has changed. If you get senior this, nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. The only thing has been changed is you got until August thirty-one. And I will be working with the police department. We briefly nipped it. I don't think we really got into it about legally what we can do because we're gonna get a listing for state, from the state of Illinois of all the cars that were purchased with a University Park address. Are you all following me? University Park address. Other towns do it all the time. We don't do it and what we'll be able to do is compare apples to apples. Meaning that some people come buy stickers from here because the stickers are cheap. I'm just gonna tell you. You're reasonable. Put it that way. I don't like cheap. Your stickers are reasonable. But we're gonna match the car registration with that individual if it's registered for the University Park. We will ask them to buy the appropriate sticker. Okay, to buy the appropriate sticker. That's the other thing. Okay, now, let me mention to this that Robinson Engineer, um, has been unable to, uh, to spread, uh, the remaining, the aggregate, the number six type B stones across the street. Uh, in fact, across the street from the village hall on University Parkway. In fact, the most effective area is, um, is immediately west of, um, it's Blackhawk, all the intermittent streets all the way up. And I don't know why this never surfaced. If you notice, there is a variance as it relates to, um, up, uh, the variance of the, the grade of how this trail is running. Uh, over fifty percent of the trail has been underwater since it's been raining. They've had, uh, Iroquois, um, paving is a contractor and I've been out on the job. They've been out there using pumps to pump the water out. Next two days, it rains again and it's like, they have been catching hell with the water situation. But the, um, the Lisa, who is the project engineer on the project, has been submitting , uh, reports to the village, to myself and to Public Works, explaining it all because the questions surfaced. Citizens come and say, why isn't this done? Well, it is, you walk out there, wear a pair of boots and walk out there. If you too heavy, you may go too far down, but even if you're light, you're gonna break the pavement. It is.
Excuse me, uh, village, village manager. I did notice that there are new type of, um, uh, plumbing added to that west of, uh, Blackhawk.
Yes.
West, west of, uh, Burnham on, uh, right in front of the farm where it's, where it's right in front of the, um, I think it's the, um, the Jehovah Witness place. They, they have new, uh, plumbing there. Is that, is that working? Is that what you're talking about?
It's called pipe culvert. Yes. It's being installed, but only a portion of it. It hasn't started to totally work yet because it's not totally done.
That part was totally underwater.
Right, right. And, and it, it's not, it's not totally operable yet, but they did install the pipe culvert and they're gonna complete that as well. Good observation, good observation. Okay, so that means you all are looking, which is a good thing. Okay. And I just want to tell you, okay, yes. I just want to tell you, uh, uh, like I said. Yeah. Somebody was saying something. Okay. But anyway, also, let me tell you this final thing. We have requested the one million dollar impact loan fee from the vendor, which is, um, Venture One. We've requested it. We should receive it in a day. But as I continue to remind everybody and as we're reminded, this is associated with TIF one, I mean, excuse me, TIF seven. And it was negotiated for equipment only that will affect TIF seven. So that includes police, fire, code enforcement and public works. I have been working with each of those departments. We've been getting bid specs, police, we've been getting state specs, a complete vehicle cost. We've been getting the cost of a new, um, boom truck is about four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It would be unfair to spend four hundred and fifty-eight thousand for a new boom truck. And that will only leave, um, a little over five hundred thousand for the other departments and that's not enough. So what we've done, we've gotten, um, new grade, uh, cost and estimate for a boom truck with a warranty.
What about, uh, what about the police cars, uh, madam, uh, manager? What about, how many number of police cars are we gonna get with that million dollars?
They only get four new police cars and I'm working out a capital outlay plan with the chief and all the, we're, we're doing a capital outlay plan for all heavy equipment. And, um, she knows we're doing and we've talked about how they schedule. See, another problem you, you would think too, trustee, hypothetically, if we were to buy, uh, uh, say six vehicles, ten vehicles at the same time, by them use, ten vehicles are gonna go around the same time. So we're trying to.
Stagger, stagger.
You got it. You got it. And so we're gonna do all of that with all departments by the creation of a capital outlay plan. And so everybody is ready. They're waiting for me at the start gate to say, I got it here. Missy, just tell me when. Bam, we're ready. So we're just waiting. The only two, we're gonna get two vehicles for code enforcement. And those two vehicles that we're getting for code enforcement, um, are not going to be cars. They're gonna be SUVs. They're gonna be, uh, SUVs and they're gonna be reasonable SUVs. And employees based on the insurance are required to go through training. They're required to go. They're required to go through training, safety training on vehicles. Some people don't treat cars that they use like your own car. You know, they don't, but they're gonna start now. The police department is doing what we've discussed, every department. Whoever drives it daily, we're gonna know who's driving it, what the problems were when they first got in the vehicle. So we gotta start checking up on maintenance. We gotta do it better. But we're developing a capital outlay plan where every year we can buy, um, equipment from the departments that need it.
Ma- manager, understand?
Yes.
I would really like you to consider looking at energy efficient cars for code enforcement, electric, electric cars, or maybe hybrid cars for code enforcement?
Thank you, ma'am. I thank you for appreciating, but I'm gonna tell you, to do that, we're gonna need, first of all, they're in a different cost category. Somebody at the side brought this up. We're gonna need to know where we could, where we have to go in terms of, uh, which, we talked about energy efficient fifty fifty, fifty gas, fifty electrical.
Now, that's a hybrid.
Yeah, well, we've talked about all the options. We've talked about all the options. So we're, we're looking at that, that too. But we're also looking at what's the biggest bang for the buck that comes with the best, um, kind of, um, warranty with it, that as well, so.
Village manager, uh, how, how soon can we get the squad cars? Uh, Brooks, can you weigh in on that four squad cars that are coming in? But when it, when are we talking about, uh, the, 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 the time? The time for the squad cars? Because I know right now squad cars are needed, like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well.
You, we'll piggyback it. We'll piggyback. I, I'm gonna go, you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna put it in my report, uh, to read tonight, so that would be one thing I can cross out. Uh, Madam Village Manager and I have been, uh, a lot of, uh, talks, um, actually this week, uh, what I did, I, I sent her, and I think Mayor Rudess was in on the email, and, uh, Chief Wilson in reference to the squad cars. Uh, the only reason I gave my perspective was because in nineteen ninety-five, when Harvey was taken over by Mayor Graves, you, we were, you know, and Miss, Mrs., Miss Eno, Harvey was in, in the same state we were in. And you, you had vehicles that were ten years old, police were driving in them. And, uh, some of them had holes in the bottom. I drove one of them that had a hole in the bottom. So what we were trying to do last week was that, um, like she said, she was assessing it when, you know, I came in with a number, I sent an email asking to go from two to eight, only to cover the shift. Because we know that once Amazon opens, that you're gonna have to deploy officers in that area, not just for crime, but also for traffic. I also, uh, mentioned in reference to, um, uh, emergency management vehicles. And so one of the ideas that I did, I actually snatched from Mayor Graves. What he did was, is that we do have, we, as you know, trustees, we spent tons of money on these squad cars that are here now. Uh, I had made the recommendation that, yes, I agree with Mrs. E. We take, you know, she said four because she did not wanna suck up the money. Because if you ever know, a squad car can easy suck up a lot of revenue when equipping it. So, uh, especially, yeah, for the new technology for the radio, so. Well, she went down to four, and so I made a recommendation, I wrote it down, uh, Trustee McMullin, was that we strip, uh, uh, the, the squad cars we do have, and that we put them into our fleet, but they would be put into the fleet of, say, for instance, uh, yeah, for Asda, there you go. I think that's, that's you, ma'am, I hear your voice. I don't see you on the air. But like, Asda and so forth, so what we start, what we're gonna start do is that, uh, uh, Madam Village Manager is gonna start taking our fleets that we still, we do have. I was up at the police department last Monday in the parking lot. We do have some working vehicles, but in this case, she can take the new vehicles, put them out in the street, and then another year from now, she could take and, and buy another set, like she said, from the capital. So by, by, within three years, hopefully, we can have, just, it's, and like I said, it took the city of Harvey, uh, uh, three years.
Three years.
Yeah, to get a whole fleet. Now, here's the difference. We don't have the funds, the, what, what Mayor Graves did is he borrowed money from the water department. We don't have a.
We don't have a water department.
Right, so he was able to purchase seven brand new vehicles each year. He pumped it to his police department, and those vehicles, they didn't need after that. What they did is they stripped them and gave them to other departments. So that's the plan that, uh, Mrs. E and myself, uh, talked about last week, and which I thought, and the mayor too, and it was very productive.
Okay, that's good.
Sounds real good.
I know.
Okay.
And, 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 and you're right, we don't have, we don't control our own water yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, let, um, let me finish, and then I'll be all done. I just wanted to make sure I got it all out. Uh, the, I just wanna mention that the roof for the Village Hall, uh, came, the roof on the Village Hall was replaced, um, because, okay, I don't know if any of you all know, I have really bad, uh, chronic asthma and chronic rhinitis, uh, chronic bronchial asthma. And I was, during the course of the day, I stayed in and out of that building over there, in and out of the building. Because most of the time you couldn't breathe. I was coming up with infection, constantly going into the doctor. I get sucked if you don't, you don't have any ma- major issue. I've had three, um, uh, sinus surgeries and some other stuff. It's not personal, but I'm sure by now it's public information. But nonetheless, I wanna mention, there is no way that we wanted to subject employees to that. Now, we're getting waterproofing in the fire department. We have to, guys, take care of what we got. So, uh, that's what we did, and an opportunity came along. This company out here that has been head along on everywhere you go in University Park, and contrary to what people think or believe, I'm telling you straight up. I don't care whether you believe it or not, but the fact is, that's where I got the information from. Then it was after which I received the subsequent information about who had roofs. That's on them. I don't get involved anybody's personal's life. I just wanna do, like they say, what have you done for me lately? Went to our insurance company, didn't have anything to do with, had the insurance company to vet them. The insurance company vetted them, came back and say, here's the deal. Your roof came from a claim, a national weather claim from May two thousand and nineteen, that said anybody in University Park that had major roof issues that was affected by a storm in May two thousand and nineteen could be eligible. But they had to send their inspectors out. The inspector came out, the insurance inspector. Now, I let them do their thing, uh, from the point I gave it to them, until they came back with the results. I didn't want anything to do with it. I allowed them to do it. They came back, submitted me a report, and told me that they had estimated the roof to be fifty-three thousand and some odd dollars. And they told us that our deductible was twenty-five thousand dollars. First of all, the village doesn't have, we don't have a surplus font accounting system, so we didn't have it. So the young man by the name of Patrick, I'm sure everybody in that town knows him, cuz they, he's had numerous roof done. Patrick said, I said, listen, we don't have any money. Then he started giving the references of seniors and other people in town he's done, um, work for. He says, the village, the insurance company told the village, they'd get a check for twenty-eight thousand dollars. I said, twenty-eight thousand dollars? Then, that's like, you know, look at the differential, eighteen thousand or what? We don't have that kinda matching whatever to pay you. He says, okay. Uh, been doing some others, he said. I just went on and on, and I don't know, did a lot of, said a lot of stuff. I don't remember all the stuff. Bottom line is, they said, uh, that the village's share would be sixty-five hundred dollars. So for a fifty-three thousand dollar roof, the village's share would be, um, sixty-five hundred dollars. All work has been done, um, everything has been completed, the roof there in and out. And, uh, just to set the record straight, the mayor, uh, I don't know what you heard, but I'm gonna tell you straight up. You didn't have anything to do with this, and you know you didn't have anything to do with this. I was the one that technically did all the work, uh, verified through the insurance company. All their contacts have been made towards. Now, I did find out down the line who roofs have been done throughout the community. But that's not my business. I don't have anything to do with them. I was, I found out after the fact, but that's there, whatever, I don't get into it. What I dealt with is the village, so it's sixty-five hundred dollars. Otherwise, it would have been a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. So that's what the bill is gonna come. We're gonna get a twenty-eight thousand dollar check. We're gonna make that check payable to them. Because it would just be a reimbursement. The village won't have to pay any of that. They called to ask, the insurance company called to ask who they were to make checkout to. And of course, I said the village of University Park, because I wanted everything to be above board. Everything to be above, above board. There have been a lot of allegations out there, and, um, as long as I'm consciously clear myself of what I did, people can assume, they can do whatever they want. But I handled this. I did all the, the insurance claims. I did everything. We got it. And we're getting a twenty-eight thousand dollar reimbursement check from the insurance covered, covered roof. So, and with that, uh, board, uh, I've said everything. Oh, the major thing that you all have been doing a wonderful job, and we got yet another donor. Well, the mayor board of trustees have been always constantly talking about providing services for the community. So it was, it was me as village manager and listening to you. We went out and we were able to get donors. You have thus far had three major food giveaways. The last major food giveaway, uh, was three hundred people, and we give numbers to them as they come through the line. It's well organized, numbers to them. Three, we distributed three hundred tickets for an hour and a half, nonstop. And we've had three, and all three have been in the rain, all three, we've all gotten soaked out there, and all three, it has not stopped anybody from doing anything. Well, number four is coming up.
Wait a minute, and we had to pop up too?
Oh, yeah. Okay, let me finish, say this, and then I go back, okay? And we got another one coming. So this one is gonna be Tuesday, June second. Tuesday, June second, mayor board and trustees again. Got the donors, mayor board of trustees, and they appreciate what you all are doing. So they were amply donated and paid for all the food, everything. So it didn't have to come out of the, the village's coffers as such. So, um, the last one is this Tuesday. Faith Movers has been so gracious to allow us to lose their location. And I'm telling Reverend Benjamin has been unreal. It's, it's, they, it's so organized, the way they go, the canopy is wonderful. And the way Northern Illinois Food Bank comes in, distributes to the pallet, who's doing what. The volunteers has, they've been marvelous. We do our final one on June second, and as a final one, if you can, it's from two to three thirty. Come on out. I know some of you are working, some of you have other obligations, but if you available, just come on out and do your last thing. Now, we've got a request as of yesterday. IPAE wants to donate another major, they said mayor board of trustees again. Another major giveaway on behalf of the mayor board of trustees, and they would pay for all. So I'm just resting whatever, but we're gonna, we'll probably talk about it before the end of the week, how it's gonna work out. And, and Keely, since she's, uh, director of community relations, will blurp up with the flyer and get all that, and we get it going. But so far, so good. Okay, so far, go so good. I got two more. It's been a long time coming. I just got two more, and then I'll end my report.
Are you sure, Trustee Brooks? I mean, I'm sorry, manager, understand? I couldn't resist myself.
Okay, the last thing I wanted to.
I'm gonna get you back.
Okay. The last thing I wanted to, to bring up is, trustee, um, Trustee McMullin had a lengthy discussion the last time about us getting the community survey. The community say that they wanna be involved in making decisions. We've been trying to get the community surveys done. We put it online, we put it out, we've had people to take it around. We've done some of everything we can do. So we got, uh, a ninety-seven percent return and, uh, on the, like, the first time you had the meeting, I think we only got five or something. We were able, within the last two weeks, get a hundred and forty-seven. One hundred and forty-seven. And you know, we extended it to August thirty-one, so I want it. And it's, those are along the lines of, everybody's saying some of the same thing, some of the same thing, which is great. Which means that we've been putting those based on priorities. So just keep them coming, keep them coming. And we're gonna distribute some in the food pantry coming up June second for the, for the University Park residents. We know who's from University Park and who's not, because they're asked to provide that. But I want, so very grateful that we got that, so, so you please just continue to bring them up, up, up. And we're gonna, uh, continue to look at this. Okay, now, my, uh, final thing is, um, I'm sorry, somebody said something, I know. You sure you want this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the final thing is to, um, okay, we got that, we get. I wanna introduce a program to the board, um, at one of the executive sessions. I wanna introduce this program. And I've done my homework. It works, it works. It also, uh, not works, it just worked for the village. It works. And they'll probably say it's about time. I wanna talk to you all about this, and I'm knowing, I'm talking around it, and it's a reason, because it has to go to executive session. It may not even come out of executive session, but I'm gonna put it out there. It's a wonderful idea, and the village needs to implement it. So it'll be a policy decision that the board would have to approve. But mayor board, that's the end of my report.
Bring it. Thank God. That, that was a very brief report. Thank you very much.
Yes, it was. Great guy. Trustee.
I yield my time to the.
I'm losing my sense of time. I'm, the phone is, is dying.
Okay, Trustee Brooks, anything?
I got some.
William, William, she sits before me on the board, so let William.
Go ahead, Trustee Liz.
Okay, my closing statement is, uh, don't mean no harm to anybody, but I would like to, to. To illiterate to.
Yeah, railroad tracks, don't forget, don't forget. I forgot, that's the last.
Yeah, we did the railroad tracks, we came up, I wasn't gonna go there today, but, okay, I'll go there. You should have went. But we did, you know.
I might.
Top of the railroad, to Metro and everything, so we got them to do what they supposed to do. So they're gonna fix the tracks, we're gonna do our part, we got grants to come in to do the road. We gotta do the first five hundred feet, coming out, but everything is gonna get fixed. We got this stuff going on, and that's the good thing about that. All right, but what I really wanted to talk about is to the trustees. The trustee, we have bills. We have to pay our bills. You have bills in your house. Okay, I can understand you ain't paying the water, cuz our water is no good, but how about your light and your gas? How about your rent or your mortgage? How about your food that you had to buy for your family? We have to do those things, okay? If you don't like something on these bills payable, then just like Brooks did today, just like McMullin did today, pardon me?
McMullin, go ahead.
Okay, Curtis, just like y'all did today. You, you pointed out what you didn't like. Well, you can pay the bills, everything else, we gotta pay these employees, they work, they want their payment, they work. All other bills that we had to pay to contain this village, we should pay them. What you don't think should be paid, tell me to take that out, pay the rest of them. And that's, that's, that really hurt me to see that you all do this to somebody. If you go out there and you work forty, forty hours a week, wouldn't you wanna be paid? If we had to have one more person to say no to paying the bills, then nobody would got paid. That's not right. That is not right, and it hurts me for a person to go through something like this. But like I said, you think about your whole, your own household. The only bill that I, I would agree with you, don't pay Aqua. Everything else gotta get paid. That's my statement.
Okay, thank you, Trustee William. That's, no, 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 no problem. Trustee Brooks, anything?
Please touch me.
Yeah.
Let me get-
Yeah.
Go ahead, Trustee McMullin, go ahead, Trustee Brooks.
Let me go-
Yeah, um, yeah, ma'am, I just, uh, mayor and board of trustees, I just wanna give my report since the last board meeting. Um, I was able to uh, get with uh, Ms. Ernestine Beck-Fulcombe in reference to uh, the repair of Old Moni Road just east of Western. We were able to get that patched up. Um, we were also able to uh, get down to uh, making sure the lawn service is taken care of, because that had became a question uh, when uh, lawn dogs uh, I guess when they did not want to uh, they just did not want to, somebody making noise. Um, when they did not want to uh, cut the grass. Uh, I also answered quite a few calls for some residents. Um, a lady, she was very pleasant, uh, she didn't leave her name, uh, but she left a voicemail. If she's watching, uh, she said that she would like the survey to be extended. So I guess that would be for Mrs. E to know about. Um, she was very pleasant, and she also made it very clear, she want all the trustees to, just set up your voicemail, so um, I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't know, I think was she, she probably didn't know, a lot of us had our, our phones taken and, and it was in the IT, but then also, she has watched previous board meetings, so I'm not making excuses for nobody. So whoever she is, when she walk up on you, she gonna make it clear, she called whoever, and uh, they didn't answer her phone, so. She, she, she's not playing, and, and, and I think there's a lot of residents are like that, so thank you, ma'am. I did, you know, we're, we're gonna make sure that, that we get that done. I made a lot of inquiries. Um, I, I know it's, although we at home, I want the residents to know that myself and uh, madam village manager are talking every day about the finances. I know I've always been on the police side, but uh, uh, madam village manager, when her and I talk, she always kinda say, trustee, you very unique, because I'm always asking questions as if I went to uh, college for finances. So, yeah, her and I are always on the phone about uh, getting some finances and, and just anything that needs to be done, we are, we are trying to make sure that things are done right. And uh, um, in reference to that, I already mentioned about the squad car, she gave her point about that. The village-wide radios was another one of the inquiries that I had made. For those who don't know, I have been preaching about emergency management, the mayor had spoke about it. The radios are part of it, uh, I am a licensed amateur radio, KB nine S I U. My record is um, it's online, so you know, I have a license for it. So I know in uh, madam village manager, why we pay money for radios, I mean, for a frequency, and we don't even use it. So it's time for us to, it make, make use to it and see if we can cut back some corners. Um, and, and in closing, uh, I wanna say, a lot of times, what I want people to understand, because sometime I may get a call after a board meeting, I'm a person that's a blue dog Democrat. You don't know what a blue dog Democrat is? Look, let me tell you. Northern Mississippi, okay? That's where my family's from, Oxford, Mississippi.
Right next door.
Right next door, and I'm black. I'm black, if you didn't notice, I'm black, and we mostly vote Democrat. So my point is, is that there are values that I have that are very socially liberal, but very conservative financially. So a lot of my votes should come there, plus you have to understand, the training that I have is integrity, public service, and pride. If you didn't know, that was the state police motto. I need that training for two weeks, and it's probably the best one that I have. So a lot of times, when I make the choice up here for the board, it's not that I'm against the mayor or any trustee about any item. And for those who don't know, I called the, I talked to the mayor after the Amazon vote. I told him my opinion, but at the end of the day, I'm not angry at him, and I don't think you should be either. I think what we should do is that we should believe in the American flag. I wore your flag on my uniform, and I believe in it. So a lot of times, I'm gonna try to be down the middle with my vote, but I also try to be honest in what I do. So please, for those, understand that if you wanna know why I make compliments to somebody that you may dislike in politics, I think we need to learn to fly higher, because you disagree with somebody, it doesn't mean you have to hate him. What it means in this business, you, I want you to think about, for those, all of us voted for Barack Obama. We all voted for him, but I want you to think about what he went through for eight years. And what he did, he still made compliments. Even when someone didn't like him, he made it more, it was his politics. Even when we knew it was personal, even when we knew what it felt like. Uh, Trustee Liz Williams, you know, I love you. What I'm not gonna do is that I'm not gonna waste the board time for Coach Franklin and Curtis, or Shirley, or the mayor. I'm not gonna make wait time for a vote if I don't believe in something in there. And believe me, I named a whole lot, a whole lot that I disagreed with today, and I'm like, Shirley. Sometimes I even bit the bullet, uh, I think when we did the January twenty-eighth meeting, I look back at that. Now, as much as I was angry about them Sam's Club card, I was angry. But I gave Jacilia the, 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 the opportunity, the answers, and I still voted as much as I did not like what I seen in Bill's favor. So that's when I revert to my previous statement, I try to be down the middle, but at some point, at some point, well, Madam Clerk ain't here, she always gotta say, you better stand for something, or you'll fall for anything.
I'm here, I'm here.
I, I, I was telling Madam Clerk, you always say, you have to stand for something, or you'll fall for anything. So ladies and gentlemen, that's why I take most of the position. Please understand that the store is our best option to getting this cleaned out. We'll deal with it if there's something wrong, but let's give them a chance. They're African-Americans coming in with an opportunity, and let's give them a chance. But everything else, we mean what we say, and we say what we mean to the best, to make it work for everyone in University Park. I yield my time, Madam Clerk and Mayor.
Thank you.
Do I have any time left?
Go ahead, Trustee.
May I have?
Go ahead, Trustee.
Thank you. It's one thing he forgot to tell you is that he's cheap. He's really cheap. No, he's a steward, he's a good steward of uh, the taxpayers' money, so I really appreciate that. So first of all, I would like to thank the village manager and the mayor for such a wonderful job, carrying on this meeting, doing this COVID, this is weird, but and I'm, I'm sure people are tired of this little background in the back, but uh, when it's time for us to uh, get back to the board meetings, I would like it even better. But my hat goes off to, to all of the first responders out there right now. My head goes off to anybody who's working right now, and, cause we need the economy running and going robust. But this village is really putting the right foot forward. We're really striving for the residents of the University Park. We are moving forward, and I really appreciate that, and we doing it during this COVID-nineteen pandemic. We are, we are one of the villages that are moving, that's moving and moving very swiftly, and I appreciate that. And we're doing it very aggressively, and, and we have a bunch of people who are smart, who are, who are, who have different skill sets, so they come out right now. So I really appreciate every one of you, and um, uh, great health to you and to uh, all of the family members out there right now, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees? Madam Clerk? Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, Madam Clerk, let me get, uh, Trustee Franklin.
Thank you. So I just wanna say, um, I really appreciate the trustees that have went out to help distribute the food in the rain, and just uh, showing that, you know, this role comes with a humanitarian aspect. And I think that all, we've all stepped up to the plate, and this role has essentially made us become frontline workers in so many situations. So where we, we have put our life on the line to ensure that we're doing things for the residents in the village of University Park, and I just wanna publicly thank all the trustees that have uh, been out there and, and doing those type of things. Um, I personally uh, sewn, I personally sewn up and, and distributed over fourteen hundred masks.
Wow.
So the community, um, and I, and I'mma, I'mma put my sewing machine up here. I think it's important to understand that I've personally made this a mission of mine to ensure that uh, the residents in, in the University Park, before we had masks, to distribute masks was a high commodity that people couldn't get. There also became a situation where we couldn't get the young children or the teenagers to wear masks, so I used a little reverse psychology and I made them fashionable, and what, and what I found is, and I started to see uh, the children and the, the teenagers in the village wearing Nike masks and different things like that. So whatever it takes to get them to, to be safe, uh, was the strategy, and it was very successful. And then also, uh, me and my wife, on every Friday, every Friday of the pandemic, we prepare meals and, and, and uh, pass them out to seniors in the community, we deliver them to their doors. Um, so we've been doing a lot of things behind the scene, and, and it just shows that when we come together as a community, we can, we can see some silver lining in a dark cloud. And then also, I'm extremely proud to mention that I've partnered with the Children Research Triangle, and, and I provided uh, total therapy services for over sixty-seven uh, youth in the village of University Park. And this is free therapy services that they were able to receive, and there uh, there was no billing involved, it was free. So I was hoping that the children and the parents would take advantage of this opportunity, and sixty-seven children and family has actually took an advantage of the opportunity. The last thing I wanna say is that as we move closer into phase three of reopening, I wanna keep in mind that we have an extremely important responsibility as elected officials to see which direction things go for University Park. Regardless of how things are federally, and regardless of uh, mandates that are put together on a state level, there's an extremely important responsibility for us to make sure that we're not either opening up too fast or too slow. And uh, the, my final statement is that um, phase three allows the parks to open up to a certain extent. So I want to uh, make sure that the village manager is aware that I'm uh, gonna be looking forward to moving forward on the phase-two restoration project of, of Craig Park, um, as soon as the opportunity presents itself. And those are my closing statements, and I'd like to say I've been praying for everyone in the village, and praying for the trustees and the mayor and the board. God bless.
Thank you, trustee. Madam, Madam Clerk?
Just briefly, um, to, if there are any commission members or department heads or newly elected village officials that did not file their statement of economic interest with the Will County Clerk, please do so before you get a fine or penalties. That's one thing. I too would like to pay homage to all of our first responders, not just our firefighters and police officers, but all of those who show up every day to provide a service for us in any way. And we have employees who try to shift days and times to come into the office. Thanks to them, our gas station attendants, and all of you. And something Trustee Brooks forgot to mention, that I always say, and that is, if we practice the, what I call my CCC.
The three C's?
Of effective, not only government, but like. And that's if you communicate, collaborate, and compromise. And this can all be done without hate, without castrating people's characters, but being actively involved and caring about all of the residents of this community, not just those who voted for you. And just to say, you will not hear campaign speeches from me, because I'm not up for three more years. So come on, guys, let's come together as a community. Let's try and do something, as I always say, be blessed. But more than that, let's be a blessing to somebody every day. This is new and different for all of us, we probably will never experience it again, but let's give uh, virtual hugs to our graduates, whether they're coming from kindergarten, grammar school, high school, or college, because they're missing on something that we've all experienced. So let's keep them embraced in our hearts. Let's applaud those who do things, and let's encourage those who want to stay blessed, be a blessing, stay safe.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any, any other trustees? Okay, I, I, I'd like to leave a, a, a brief report, I'm gonna cut it down in half, and I'll ask Niva to uh, post it on the uh, village website. First of all, I would like to say thank you to all of our residents for complying with the governor's orders and our orders, because the whole goal is to ensure that everyone stays safe. It's a little difficult during these times, but your life means a lot to me, and it means a lot to my, to the board of trustees as well. So the things that we're doing, it's not to prohibit you from doing anything, or stop you from doing the things that you do like, but we're concerned about your health and your well-being. So don't take it personal, it's all about ensuring the safety, and I'm not exactly sure on how long we'll be under the mask. I can almost anticipate at least another year, until there's some kind of vaccination or anything for the mask. So again, I wanna compliment and thank you, the residents, for hanging in there and showing your residency, not just during the COVID-nineteen, but through a water crisis as well. And just to let you know how strong and how aggressively your board works, we're still able to conduct business, still bringing in permit fees, still running up licensing fees, so we're operating not at full staff, but thank you, Mr. Ernestine, for staggering the ship to make sure that the residents are able to have some of their needs met during this crisis. I'd also like to say thank you to all of our graduates from the eighth grade, for uh, University Park graduates from eighth grade and from the high school, and to all of the graduates of two oh one U School District. Unfortunately, there's not the usual graduation, but we're here in spirit and in truth, and we're definitely um, behind you guys, and maybe during the creativeness over the summertime, that we'll be able to do some kind of social distancing event to, and your, and celebration of your accomplishments as graduates. Also, there's also another side, I also like to offer my condolences and condolences from the board of trustees to the members and families of residents of University Park who may have lost someone due to COVID-nineteen pandemic. This is something that we've never seen before, and it is not discriminatory, it hits people from the cradle to the, to a hundred years old. So it's not discriminatory, and we know there have been losses in our community, and I like to offer our condolences to that, to, 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 to everyone as well. So just to go over a brief mayor's report, for the month of March, there were a variety of meetings. Project Bluebird was the cap of a- Project Bluebird was the cap of it on March thirteenth. There's been capital improvement meetings and annual calls with Aqua Water, that Trustee Brooks and the manager and I are on every single week. And it goes on and on with this Aqua Water, but just to let you know, it's not forgotten, we're continuously in touch with the Attorney General's Office updating on anything, the EPA, uh, getting updates on how the chemical is taking, so we haven't dropped the ball, we're actually hanging in there, and we might even come up with a long-term solution. And that, I won't disclose, Trustee Brooks and Ernestine, you know about this one, we're correct? And we can inform the board down the line. But there's been meetings every Tuesday, every Thursday. I hold a, a general briefing meeting with the first responders, the manager twice, and the clerk twice a week. We're all on this, and the chief of police are all on the same page. We're working so good with the churches and the universities in the community, it's ne, I've never seen it before. I want to just say thank you to Pastor Reginald Williams at First Baptist Church for his mask giveaway. Last week, there were hundreds of people and tons of people who drove through the parking lot to receive masks from First Baptist. Thank you to Faith Movers, Pastor, uh, Moses Herring, Benjamin Chambers, for just helping us set a platform to help out and reach the, uh, residents of the community. The food drives are fantastic, and you ought to see that little Shirley out there working. I mean, she gets soaking wet, but we continue the mission. I don't know if it's a blessing or not, but we, we make it happen. Trustee Williams is out there with her cane, and it's just a, it's actually forming into a community where the churches and the government are all working hand in hand together. Trustee has various concerns. Trustee Jenkins has a main concern about that Regal Farm. Trustee Bolden has a concern about economic development. Trustee Franklin has a concern about youth education advisory and senior services. Trustee Williams has concerns about her overpass and what's going on around the metro station. Trustee McMullin's concerned about IT and information technology. Trustee Brooks is concerned about police cars and cameras in the community. The clerk is concerned about making sure that the records are kept appropriately. I mean, so we're working as a team together, so again, thank you to everyone who's offering their support and seeing the vision. And we're going to break, we're going to get through this, and University Park will come out of this COVID-19 better after than it was prior to. And if I could, and if I could have a mo, and I got also mentioned, uh, Jim Ellis, he's always around, he's there to sign those checks whenever it's necessary. He's a little hungry right now, and I'm sure we all are, so I'm going, I'm not going to mess with him too much. So thank you all, thank you, residents, for your support, and believe in us, we're going to make some things happen in this, uh, University Park. And not just University Park, but the Southland as a region in whole. Stay tuned for big projects coming down the line, and opportunity to shop and keep those dollars circulating within the town. Thank you so much for your time. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, trustee.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. You all have a fantastic week.
Good night, be safe, everybody.
Thank you, bye. Is there a motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None. Thank you, Mr. Miller. We're out of here.
Have a safe evening, good night.